The Fort Bend ISD Board of Trustees meeting is an open meeting for the public to observe the board conducting district business. Therefore, audience members may address the board during the designated Audience Items section on the agenda. If you have any printed materials you want to give to the board members, you must provide them to the Board Secretary Norma Perez or to me, and we will provide them to the board. We also ask that the members of the audience be respectful of others, remain quiet during the meeting so that everyone is able to hear the proceedings. For your convenience, microphones have been provided on both sides of the boardroom. Please speak directly into the microphone if you're asked to answer a question or address the board during the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Officer Ron Taveros. The time is 6:02 PM, and this meeting is hereby called to order. We have the presence of a quorum, and the meeting has been duly called, and notice of the meeting has been posted for the time and manner required by law. We're going to start this evening with our pledges of allegiance, so please join us in standing for the pledges and remain standing for a silent invocation.
(Pleading) A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the public voice says, "One nation, under by indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, on the Texas way." I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under by one indivisible.
Please remain standing for a silent invocation. And this evening, we'd like to recognize a moment of silence for former trustee Farrell Hayes, who served on the school board from 1972 to 1978. Thank you, you may be seated. We're going to start our meeting this evening by administering the Oaths of Office to our newly-elected trustees, trustee Graal James and Addie Heliger. We have with us this evening two of our commissioners, Commissioner James Patterson and Commissioner Grady Prestige, who will administer the Oaths of Office this evening. Graal and Addie?
Please repeat after me. Raise your right hand. I, Addieola Heliger, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of school board trustee for the Fort Bend Independent School District of the state of Texas, and will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state. So help me God. Congratulations.
Graal, before I do this, you know I'm going to make a speech. Guys, the two of us as county commissioners are so privileged to be here today. We tell people every day that the public schools in Fort Bend County are what makes the difference. For us to look good sometimes, if we mess it up, it's our fault and not the public school's fault. So just, you do a great job, and we appreciate you so much. So if you will repeat after me. I, Graal James, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of school board trustee for the Fort Bend Independent School District of the state of Texas, and will do the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state. So help me God.
Congratulations, and thank you for serving.
So if you guys want to stand up front, you can, but if you, or you can come back to your seats since the microphone. Okay. And then you guys can make comments before we move on. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And Ms. Heliger.
All right, so I just want to say thank you to my son. He's here somewhere. Say hello, son. He's 14 years old, and he's in the ninth grade, and it's definitely a, this is definitely a labor of love, and he sacrifices his mother long nights on Mondays and all the other nights that we have to be somewhere. And I just want to tell you that I love you and I appreciate your support. And I also want to thank all of you all who continue to help me grow in this role as a school board member, because I couldn't do it without all of you all, your countless support, your questions, your "what about that?", and "what are y'all doing?". I mean, all that helps me and challenges me, and challenges us to make sure that we're doing the best we can for our kids. So again, I just want to say thank you all for your support.
Thank you, Addie. Mrs. James?
Thank you, Mrs. Tosan, for calling on me. I almost started talking without you calling on me. Well, I'd like to say thank you to everyone who's here tonight, and particularly my husband, David, who, without the support of family, there's no way that you can do this role as a trustee or certainly serve the hours that you, that we're here in the meetings are just part of it. It's not just the Monday nights. It's all the homework that we do between meetings. It's the community gatherings that we go to. It's meeting with all the folks, many of which in this room we've met with this week. So I just want to say that I appreciate you, David, and I appreciate your support and allowing me to do this for the past six years and being willing to commit to another three, because nine years is a long time. And I want to thank our Addies and my guests and friends who came especially tonight for the swearing-in, and we appreciate your support over the months before the non-election, which was remarkable, because for us to cancel the election entirely is a big step, and Addie and I feel, we feel honored. We feel honored by the community who has confidence and faith in us to continue in our role. So thank you, thank you for that, and thank you for, folks, for coming tonight. And I want to also thank the team of eight that's sitting up here, because we are a team, and we work together, and I appreciate how we listen to one another, and as Addie said, we learn from one another, but we are better together than we are as individuals. And so thank you to all of you who've made me a better trustee, helped me grow as a person over these last years, and I thank you very much for that. And I will lastly say thank you to Commissioner Patterson, Commissioner Prestige for being here tonight. One of the strengths of this school board is we have reached out to the community, to the cities, and to the county, and we work together to do, to make the best decisions and to do the right thing for the citizens. So thank you for being here tonight, and representing the county, we appreciate you two very much and your service to our county.
Thank you, Mrs. James, and congratulations again to both of you. Next up are our recognitions. Dr. Dupree.
Thank you, Madam President. If the board would join me in front of the dais, we will now recognize some outstanding students and staff.
Good evening, Madam President, Superintendent Dr. Dupree, and members of the board. We've got some outstanding students with us here this evening. First, I would like to introduce from Glover Elementary, Ms. Kennedy Green and Cole Roger, first-grade students. These youngsters did an outstanding job. I'd like to mention that they were chosen for their academic achievements and outstanding character. Kennedy participates in the Vista program. She's bright, creative, and a compassionate student. And Cole is loving, creative, and competitive student who excels in mathematics. Congratulations, students, and thank you so much, Glover Elementary, for sharing them with us. They did a great job. Next, from Quell Valley Middle School and Sartarsha Middle School, we've got some outstanding destination imagination teams. We have the Radicals, who will be advancing to the GI Global Finals. The Global Finals will include more than 17,000 students competing from 15 countries. So let's give them a big round of applause as we invite them up. All right, we have Team Radical from Quell Valley Middle School, Anshu Me Javari, Shriya Sundarmothi, Eshan Khade. From Sartarsha Middle School, Raina Patel, Saachi Jain, Raniel Shaw, and two fantastic team managers. We have Jujisha Doshi and Saachi Jain. Congratulations, and let's wish them luck. Next, from Bush High School, we've got some representatives from the Theater Department, who, as you know, won first runner-up at the 2018 UIL Conference for 6A one-act play in the state competition. They performed scenes from Water by the Spoonful. We actually had a couple of students who couldn't be with us this evening who did really well. Ms. Avery Ford was selected as an All-Star Cast member, which is a top 10 actors in the state. And Belon Shamellus and Michael Duran were selected for honorable mention. So representing Bush High School this evening, we've got Abdullah Nassar, and Miguel Cortez. And then supporting them as one of their outstanding directors, we have Ms. Destiny Good job to Bush High School. Next, from Garcia Middle School, we have Edward Gambrell III and Tracy Way. Tracy's from Sartarsha Middle School, and both competed, qualified to compete at the National History Day Contest in Washington, DC this June. And this event highlights students' interpretation of historical events. Congratulations to them both. Next, we have Sandy Bristow, Program Director of the Oliver Foundation, an FBI SD Shack member. Is she here this evening? Oh, there she is. And she received the 2017 Healthy School Hero Award for her work to improve school health and wellness in the greater Houston area. Congratulations. Oh, and this was a national award, so congratulations. Thank you. Dr. Dupree, that's all I have for this evening.
Before we conclude this evening, I want to take a few minutes to recognize our outstanding executive team and superintendent who led this district into receiving the HEB Excellence in Education Outstanding Large District in Texas Award. Fort Bend ISD received this award on May 6, and I know that we informally mentioned it last week, but I wanted to take a moment to recognize the district during our regular business meeting. It recognizes school districts for their commitment to student achievement through innovative programs, parent and community involvement, and professional development opportunities for teachers and administrators. The recognition is well-deserved. If you look out into the hall, I think you will see a lot of community members here this evening, and we are in the process of having developed and to make some very difficult decisions as we move forward. But I will tell you that this team has worked very hard to ensure that the, that the community has been involved, and always does. We have long believed that we're the best because of the partnerships with our community, with our staff, and with our parents. But this really demonstrates that and honors the district on a statewide level. And it is certainly my honor, and I know on behalf of the board, it's the board's honor to work with Dr. Dupree and this outstanding executive team. You really are the best in the state, and we appreciate you. Congratulations.
As we conclude our recognitions this evening, I want to thank you, Kristin, for those kind remarks. And I would have to add that the board also contributes to our ability to win that award, because it does take a strong team all the way around. I always say, I've got a team of eight here, and then a team of nine here that I'm on. I'm kind of that swing person, but collectively, we're doing great things together. But that's just the leadership at the top, because we have leaders throughout our entire organization who are doing the work, who are executing every day. And that includes the 5,000 teachers, the 76 principals, every custodian, bus driver, technologist, the accountants, the HR team. I could go across the table, over 11,000 staff members, and deliver to help us provide the services we provide in this community. So I want to acknowledge everyone for this award. Thank you, board. And my, the real reason I'm here, other than to just extend those remarks, is to also say, tonight's another big night. We've sworn in our board members, and I would say that there's a lot of good things aligning. The fact we didn't have an election winning this award, it all kind of says the same thing, that Fort Bend is in a great, great place. But tonight, we're also, a little later, the board will be electing new officers. And so Kristin Tosan will be ending her second year as president, and so as we do traditionally on this meeting, we want to give her a gift, to say thank you for your second year of service as board president. And, you know, those of you who've served as president know, it takes a little extra time to build the agendas, to wrangle the superintendent, to just, to kind of, to handle the media calls, and just all the different things the superintendent's, or the board president's required to tackle. So you had some strong leaders before you, in Mr. Rice and Mrs. James, and now I know you'll be passing the baton this evening, but it's been a joy working with you and a pleasure working with you as you've led this team. So thank you for all your work.
Before we move into our next section, I do want to say thank you. It has been an honor to serve. Thank you all for being here this evening to recognize our trustees being sworn in, and we appreciate your support. We're going to let those who were here for the swearing-in portion, you may now exit. Thank you.
Come on, you need to stay.
Or you can stay. And then we'll let community members come in and fill the open seats. And thank you. That's great, Mom. What am I eating? I think I left my papers. What the hell? I left all my stuff I'm working... Five more. So she's here? So she's not here? We should have put their... Okay. Thank you all for being here this evening. We're, we've shuffled the agenda a little bit this evening in order to be able to present the updated facilities master plan recommendations. We wanted you guys to be able to hear these and hear some board discussion on that before you, we get to audience items, and audience members make comments, and that way you can tailor your comments if needed. So at this time, we are going to start with the 2018 Facilities Master Plan update. Dr. Dupree?
Thank you, Madam President. As we begin, get into, before we get into the presentation, I want to take a minute to read a statement I've prepared for this evening. I want to take a moment to introduce the administration's presentation of revised recommendations by acknowledging the challenges that come along with any planning effort of this magnitude, because I know that the conversations that have taken place over the last five months have been difficult for many in our community. At its core, Fort Bend ISD is a collaborative community made up of many voices, backgrounds, and beliefs, all unified in our desire to do what is best for the students of our community. It is truly an honor to be a part of this community, and I am proud of the continuous planning efforts that began in 2013 and provided the strong foundation that has paved the way for where we are today. We are thankful to the Steering Committee for carefully considering several factors throughout this process, including the use of innovative practices, building utilization, enrollment projections, and the community feedback that our community members so passionately provided. We understand that the discussions involve individual school communities, and more importantly, the students who attend these schools, so the decisions have not been easy. Tonight, the administration is presenting a total of 11 recommendations that pertain to future facilities and programming considerations, and nine of the 11 recommendations are directly aligned with the feedback of the Steering Committee. It is important for our community to understand that in developing the recommendation, the goal of the administration has remained constant, to ensure that we are doing everything we can to provide the very best learning environments for our students while utilizing our facilities as efficiently as possible. During tonight's meeting, our community members and board will notice that the original recommendations have been revised based on feedback provided by the board and the community. We've come to the realization that we were trying to address too many issues and challenges in our district at one time. One example of this is a previously recommended consolidation of academies at Hightower, where we attempted to solve the issue of utilization of our high school campuses and at the same time, address the GPA and class rank concerns that have been voiced by students and parents at high schools that currently host academies. I truly regret that our attempt to solve too many challenges at once resulted in a recommendation that made some communities feel devalued. That was not and would never be our intent. As we present updated recommendations tonight, you will notice that we have refocused our efforts to address building utilization while still developing innovations in construction and instruction that prepare our students for a future beyond our system. We have to prepare them for a reality that is different from the traditional educational system. During the past five years as a district, we have built the foundation for implementing instructional programming that will allow students more choice and greater opportunity. Leadership means moving to the head of the pack. We will be the best because we're willing to challenge the status quo and accept risks that will pay off and improve student outcomes. Just as members of our community have achieved success by taking calculated risks, and like our great state of Texas has emerged as a leader among the United States, Fort Bend ISD will set the pace in graduating students who are ready to lead into the future. Good enough is not good enough anymore in Fort Bend ISD. Following board adoption of these facilities' master plan recommendations, it's our goal to continue collaborating with our community with innovation in mind. We're continuing the journey that first began in 2013, and we now have the foundation to pursue more innovative solutions that will inspire and equip our students for futures beyond what they can imagine. I consider it a privilege and an honor to lead in this district, and I value the support and partnership of this community. Thank you all for being here, and thanks for all you've done during the last few months to help get to this point. So with that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to our Chief of Staff, or I guess to Scott Leopold and Beth Martinez, our Chief of Staff.
And Dr. Dupree, before we get started, I do want to say that, just so that the community knows, this is discussion at this point. We'll take audience items, and the board will not vote on these recommendations, if at all, to the extent that we do, until after the closed session. So this portion is to see the updated recommendations and to hear board discussion on it. I think it's, I'd like to do, just as we did last time, and take them one recommendation at a time, see if the board has questions or comments. Mr. Leopold?
Great, thank you. Okay, jumping right into it. Again, we're going to go through these by a kind of theater pattern grouping. Our first grouping is Austin Elementary Schools in Austin, Travis, and Bush. Recommendation one is to... Recommendation one is to expand capacity at Elementary 51 from 850 to 1,000 during the construction process. This is planned to open in the fall of 2019, and a rezoning process would take place during the 2018-19 school year. Next piece of this is to build an addition at Neal Elementary for approximately 260 students, or 12-pack, 12-classroom addition to increase the capacity from 850 to 1110. This will be needed by the fall of 2020. Lastly, build an addition on Madden Elementary for approximately 220 students, or 10-pack, to increase the capacity from 850 to 1270. And this will be needed by the fall of 2022, and this will also be impacted by the ES-51 boundary process. Just to kind of show how the numbers work with this, we've added this from last time. And so the top table is going to kind of show you the rolling capacity for each school in this scenario. When a new school is opened, or the capacity is changed due to an addition, the numbers turn blue. And then you'll see our enrollment down here. In this particular slide, we don't show any enrollment for Elementary 51 because it does require a boundary process. You can see the utilization here, and again, this is based on the current boundaries for Madden. But this is reflective of the addition. And so this percentage that we show here, this 193% is different from what we had last time, because now we're showing that addition on Madden. We've also run this, I'm going to show this slide first. We've run this a different way, and what I did here is I plugged in a theoretical boundary that we had for Elementary 51 from our boundary process that we did last time. And so this just kind of gives you an idea of what the utilization could look like at those schools. Again, it would be confirmed during a boundary process, but you can see, you know, what those utilization figures would look like once those additions come online and the new schools are online as well. And again, that's not, it's not going to be exactly what it's going to be. It may be different based on that boundary process that is required by policy FC local. Okay, so that's it for this one.
Thank you, Mr. Leopold. Do we have questions or comments from the trustees? Mr. Rosenthal. Okay. Do you have questions about the second slide? Mr. Leopold, will you take us through, go back to the other slide, take us through that slide once again? And I do have a specific question. You said that you put in a theoretical boundary.
That's for this one.
Okay. Can you take us through the two slides again?
Sure. So this just shows the capacity at each school by year, and so when the additions would come online, or the new schools that opened, we showed the capacity for those schools. And so ES-51 would have a capacity of zero for this year and a zero for next year because it's not open. And then in 1920, when it opens, that capacity comes online, increasing the capacity in the area from 1,700 to 2,700. And then a year later, we get the addition at Neal that raises the capacity to 2,960. And then in 2223, we have the addition at Madden coming online, raising the capacity to 1,070 at that school, and 3,180 for the three schools in total. This is our enrollment based on the current boundaries as they are today, and so you can see we have our enrollment at Madden going from 960 all the way up to 2,065, 10 years out. This is the utilization with the current boundary, and so you can see, you know, we add the addition on Madden, and with the current boundary, it doesn't do much. We know that we have to have a boundary change for that. But you can see, we have our overall utilization here at 109% when we have all of these things online.
So let me just ask a clarifying question to make sure that we understand. So, I'm just going to use Madden as an example. So current capacity is 850. You're recommending an addition, administration's recommending an addition to Madden that will come online in 2223.
Correct.
And increase the capacity to 1,070 students.
That's correct.
And then when we go to the enrollment numbers, we're seeing a steady increase as houses are built and students move into the area. And the utilization that's reflective of that increase is shown in the bottom table as we're increasing from 113% this year, all the way up to 193% in 2728, and that's if no boundaries are moved.
You're correct.
Okay. Does that make sense to all the trustees? Okay, so go to the next slide. Do you want, have a question on this one?
Yes, I do have a question.
Okay, Mr. Rice.
So, Mr. Leopold, I don't understand, when you show Elementary 51 up there, why the enrollment is zero all the way across?
Because we haven't established a boundary for it.
Okay, so are you going to identify, are you going to explain how the addition of 51 helps us?
Yes, and so the next slide-
That's in the subsequent slide?
That's the subsequent slide.
Thank you.
What this is, is this is just a theoretical boundary for 51 that we drew a year or two ago, just to kind of see, hey, what would it look like? And so this just gives you an example with the boundary that we had here. It would open with 543 students, and then it would continually grow to 899. At Madden, we would, you know, once we get 51 online, it would go down to 843. I'm not sure if Madden has ever been that low. And then it would go to 1166 with the boundary that we have theoretically drawn 10 years out. And so Madden would be 90%, Madden would be at 109%. And again, this is just based on a theoretical boundary, so the balance could be much better once we have the actual process. But this is just to kind of give you an idea of the impact that that capacity has to that enrollment.
So for clarification, this slide has the same capacity numbers as the previous slide.
Yes.
And now the enrollment chart has a theoretical boundary drawn where we would be filling seats at Elementary School 51.
You're correct.
And this is what utilization and enrollment might look like under that theoretical boundary.
Yes.
But that boundary process would not start until next school year, where we would engage community members and come up with where the lines would be drawn at that point. So this could be different, depending on that process. And we're showing at Neal, at least in 2526, hitting over policy utilization at that point.
Sure.
Okay. Is that, Deb ready, understand? Okay, Mr. George.
Yeah, that makes sense to me. And are we going to talk about the impact it's going to have on the middle schools?
We believe that we looked at the utilization, we don't have any utilization issues at Garcia or Bowie within the next 10 years.
Okay, this is going to, this growth, it is explosive growth, it's going to, we have enough room to accommodate that in the future.
For the projections that we have right now, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. George, Ms. Heliger.
I just want to make sure I'm clear, because I get the numbers, I just want to make sure I understand that we're not creating the boundary lines today.
No.
So you're going to come back to us and ask us about the boundary lines, or you go, huh? Yeah, I just want to make sure I understand, everybody else understands too, because I don't think that was clear. So throughout this year, you're going to engage the community to draw those boundary lines?
Correct. Policy requires that there be a process in 2018-19, so next school year, to establish the boundaries for Elementary 51 when it opens.
I'd like to add to that. We do extensive community engagement through focus groups and then large group meetings in the communities that could be impacted by a boundary change for any of these elementary schools. And then, per policy, we bring that to the board for consideration in January for implementation the following school year.
Thank you for clarification.
Thank you, Ms. Heliger. Any other questions on this recommendation from the trustees? Okay, Mr. Leopold, thank you.
Okay, our next area is the elementaries in Clements and Elkins that are south of Route 6. Our first part of this, this is kind of a two-part recommendation, a kind of if-then. So the first one is, pending the availability of a site at a feasible price, construct a new elementary school for approximately 850 students with a core of 1,000 to relieve Commonwealth. This is needed by the fall of 2020, if land can be procured by August of 2018. If that does not work, the district is unable to purchase land in the proper location at a feasible price, then proceed with building additions at the following schools and rezone to balance enrollment. And so the first one would be a 12-classroom addition at Commonwealth for approximately 260 students to increase capacity from 743 to 1003. Austin Parkway, 12-classroom addition to go, for 260 students to go from 821 to 1081, or 1,081. And then a 10-classroom addition at Settlers Way for 220 students to increase the capacity from 731 to 951. The addition at Commonwealth will be needed by the fall of 19. Rezoning would need to be, to impact utilization at the 2223 school year. Austin, we'd have to have that rezoning process to have Austin Parkway for an addition at 2425 and rezone to balance enrollment, and then Settlers Way also in 2425 and rezoning to balance enrollment. This is our first scenario, and so this is what the numbers would look like if we added an additional school to the area. And so I want to be very clear that this is an either-or, not both. And so this shows what the impact would be to utilization. So we would hit 100% in 1920, and then if we get the school open in 2021, we would go down to 88. And that would keep us within policy with all these schools over the 10-year planning period. And so obviously, we'd have to rezone if we're opening a new school to balance enrollment for all the schools in the area, and that would have to happen in 1920, the year before we'd open that school. Okay, the next slide shows us what would happen if we had those additions come online. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, this is, that's a typo. This is for the additions, this slide.
So the titles are wrong, but the slides are-
Correct.
Okay, yes. So this, go back to the previous slide, please. So this is not construct additions, this is the new school-
Correct.
-being built.
It's flipped.
Okay, and then the next slide is-
Additions.
-construct elementary school additions. Okay.
So we have our Commonwealth addition possible by 2019-20. The reason that I use that language is because it's already overutilized, but the soonest we can get that online would be 1920. And so if that addition comes online in 1920, our utilization at Commonwealth would go from 138% to 107%. We may need to rezone at that point, but we're not, we would not be within, we'd be within policy for at least three years. And then we would hit 122% at Commonwealth in 2223. And then we would have our additions coming online in 2425 at Settlers Way and Austin Parkway, and we'd have to have a rezoning process prior to that. But that keeps our utilization at 99%, and then it goes to 101% in year 10 in that area.
Thank you, Mr. Leopold. Just for clarification, the order of the additions would be Commonwealth first-
Yes.
Then Austin Parkway second, and then Settlers Way third?
Austin Parkway and Settlers Way would open in the same year.
Okay. And just to clarify, you're saying that once the additions are made at Commonwealth, we would potentially not need to rezone until the 2223?
Correct.
Time, okay. Okay, questions from the trustees? Mr. Rosenthal.
Yes, so is there a reason that we'd wait till 2425 with those second additions since Commonwealth is going to go over in 2223? Is there a way to move those up a year?
They could be moved up, but we could also rezone sooner to utilize existing space within Austin Parkway and even Colony Bend, where 82 and 87% the year before. So it really depends on funding, whether they want to be rolled into a bond package this year, perhaps a bond package in '24.
Okay, so that's, there's some flexibility there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal, Mrs. James.
All right, so with this recommendation, it's an either-or, so if we say yes to the recommendation, what does that mean to the administration? Then you guys decide, or I don't know?
It would always be the board's decision. It just means we would do the legwork on it and come back and say, we cannot find a site, or we can find a site, and then the board would have to take action to procure land if we can recommend a site. But if we say we cannot find any viable site, you know, for a reasonable price that we would want to invest, that depends on the pricing, then we would say, okay, is the board agreeable? This is acceptable, unacceptable? And then we would agree to move forward, but it would require board attention either way.
So just quick question. So have we already kind of taken a look and seen?
We did that.
We are exploring, yes.
So, can I ask one?
Yes, sure.
So then one other question, if you go back a slide, my slide's, slide seven, wow, yeah. Is that on the bottom section there where it says 126 on the left, Commonwealth, right now is at 126%, right?
Correct.
And so next year, they're at 138, according to these numbers. Okay, so that's the projection.
So that's what happens if we put the addition on that school year. If we don't, so this would be the, I'm not sure why these aren't updating. So we'd be at 145% in 1920, I think that's what you were getting at. And we wouldn't be able to have that school online until 2021, so we'd have to get through a 145% year before the school comes online.
Okay, so we might, it might be a situation where we're going to have to redirect kids or cap enrollment or something along those lines, depending if the, depending what the situation would be.
Possibly.
Okay. And then what do we know about the core of that building? Is it, can it handle an addition to become that large?
We're currently exploring that to make sure. We'll have that information as we move forward. The one thing that I do want to clarify is that these numbers do not include any portables. This is just the building utilization numbers, and we're also, last month, y'all approved some portables. We're taking two portables there this year to go ahead and get an additional 80 students.
Yeah, so thank you, that's a good point. And I just would say that, but if we have 25% overcapacity or heading to 40% overcapacity that's in the same size core building, that's where everybody has to eat lunch and the music room and the library and all those core parts of the building. So just, I'm thinking it through as I'm talking, but I, it seems like it's very crowded there.
Mr. George.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. And my question is, yeah, we are talking about an elementary school possibly built in Riverstone. Is there any status on the search for land?
We are actively pursuing. We're looking at all avenues at this point. So far, the only property that we know is available is commercial property, and it's about $17 a square foot.
So other than that, there is nothing available?
Well, at this point, we have not identified.
Okay. And another question is, Scott, for you, when it comes to that growth you see with Commonwealth, that's predominantly coming from Avalon in the Riverstone area?
Yes, almost exclusively.
Exclusively, okay, okay. Okay, I think, thank you, appreciate your help.
Thank you, Mr. George, Mr. Rice.
Thank you, Madam President, Mr. Leopold and Dr. Dupree. I'm going to echo the comments of my colleague, Dave Rosenthal. If we have a bond in 2018, it will be in November, and that effectively means nothing will happen until 2019. Likewise, if we put off an addition at these other schools until 2024, the earliest time we could have a bond in 2024 would be in November, and that means design would start in 2025, and it probably wouldn't be ready for the start of school until 2026, unless you had a midterm. So this recommendation, if we have to go this route, I would strongly suggest that all three of those be included in a bond, if that is- all three of those be included in a bond if that is what the administration proposes or we're going to run out of time. Thank you.
That actually, Mr. Rice, is the proposal, that's why they're here. I'm some, I just think maybe we've had a little, didn't communicate well on when they should open because I would agree with you, if we have the money, we should start construction soon enough to have them open to relieve the schools in a timely way rather than pushing them out that far.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Rice, Ms. Heliger.
Just, I wanted to piggyback, I think was Dave Rosenthal, Dave Rosenthal's question and to Mr. Rice's. If we have to rezone, rezoning is inevitable, so why not rezone now?
You mean for the additions and everything?
Yeah.
We could, it's just a question of how good are those, how good are those numbers going to be for how long? Because if you change the boundaries, it impacts the way people buy houses and the pattern of the growth.
Yeah, but we still have the additions that are coming up, we know that, I would suspect even if you rezone now, you're zoning here, you're zoning in twenty-two, twenty-three, you, you have the projections, right?
Sure.
So I, I want to know, I'm interested to know what the, what the numbers will look like if you just went ahead and rezone now.
Well, if we put the additions on at, at a, if we put the addition on Commonwealth, it would take our utilization down to a hundred and seven percent. And so we're within policy for, for nineteen-twenty. We beat a hundred and twelve percent in twenty-twenty-one and a hundred and nineteen percent in twenty-one, twenty-two. I think that, that another reason to kind of delay rezoning as long as possible is because we'd likely be moving students, or we may be impacting students that were moved to Ann Sullivan from Commonwealth or Austin Parkway at that point and we don't want to move the same student twice in their elementary school career. And so that's another reason to kind of look at delaying it as much as we can.
Well, definitely not a proponent of rezoning twice. I'm trying to figure out how we can do that and knowing, knowing the projections that we're going to be building, how we can do that without having to do it later on.
Sure.
And as we move closer, I'm sorry, as we move closer to that time, we can do the rezoning process like we've done in the past when we know a school is coming in line, online a year or so after. We did that with Ronald Thornton Middle School where we were able to, to work with that rezoning at the same time that we did the planning process for Sullivan so that the communication can be provided to the community in a, in a timely and ahead-of-time manner.
One, I think the way that we can fix that is to Mr. Rice's point and to Ms. Heliger and Mrs. James's points that, and I guess Mr. Rosenthal as well, I would agree with them, that maybe what we need to be doing is building all the additions and doing the rezoning sooner rather than later if this is the option that we have to do. I don't think delaying the additions is the right thing to do because we're already overutilization. Policy is set at a hundred and twenty percent because we know that at some schools we don't have, we, we can't rezone to relieve it. And so we allow it to get to that point while we're building other schools or because we can bring in temporary buildings and we don't want to rezone kids, you know, over and over again. So that's kind of why policy's in place. It's not because, when we had this conversation, it's not because we think utilization should be over a hundred percent. So I think what I'm hearing from the board members is that, at least I agree with the first recommendation to build the new elementary school, provided we can find the land. It's needed, it's clearly needed. And there's still some question about the core and that's what I wrote down, the core of all of these schools. I think this is going to be one of those that we can say, if you find land, maybe yes, that's what we would like to do as a board. If you don't find land, maybe we need more information about the core of these schools to ensure that building these additions is even feasible. And if the core doesn't support these additions, then we need to know what the cost of expanding the additions is going to be. But it sounds like we would all be in agreement that these additions need to go on immediately if this is the course we have to take so that we can, so that first of all, we can create certainty in the community and second of all, we can have one process that, that maybe lets these schools feel some relief sooner rather than later. Mr. Rosenthal.
Yeah, so to follow up on that, so we probably do not have money in the current budget to start building these immediately, right? That, that's going to require that bond. Is that, is that fair to say?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay, is there at least some contingency to, to use to start designing? You think, I mean, I know it's, you know, we've got to be careful using that, but.
Yes, sir, we, I mean, there, we're at this point projecting about fifteen-point-four million in excess, but we still have a big unknown with the Career and Technology Center.
If I may, the other thing we could do is just says, same way we're funding Elementary Fifty-One is through reimbursement resolution. And so if we anticipated having a bond in, in November or even May, that would be within the eighteen-month window.
So I was going to actually wait to bring this up, but since you brought it up, so what happens if, if that bond doesn't pass?
If we did not have a bond pass in November, then the general fund would have to pick up that expense, just like it's paying for now.
So it's going to come out of M and O.
However, if, as long as you're within eighteen months, if we have a reimbursement resolution, we have an election again in, in May of twenty-nineteen and that's successful, anything within the eighteen months, stuff we would spend now, for example, would be within those eighteen months, would be covered through the bond reimbursement resolution.
So you could, once you got that bond money, you can then reimburse the M and O fund?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Or if it doesn't pass, then we just would not build the school or we would not build the additions. Correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah. So either, either reimbursement or we just have to, we just can't do it, just have to stop. Ms. Heliger.
So then to that point, then that means that within the eighteen months, you can't break ground, you can't put anything up, then if we're waiting for either confirmation of the bond in order to get reimbursed, to reimburse our M and O, is that what you're saying? So, because I'm, I'm hearing that.
So for me, the reason I would, the reason I brought that up is because, and, and this is not, this is not for us to decide now or tonight, but I would not feel comfortable extending ourselves to start this work under the current operating, operations budget we have now because we're already really have a deficit budget right now. I mean, where's the money going to come from? So that being said, I mean, we're really reliant on the bond for a new school and we're really reliant on the bond for additions, especially if we're going to have to expand core. So I'm just, that's why it was, that's kind of really the point I was trying to make is that.
So there's really no option here?
There's really not.
I just want to make sure that was.
For money.
Because.
For money.
Well, the, the option is, and I think this might answer your question, correct me if I'm wrong, but we would have eighteen months, like say the, say the bond fails in November, you could try it again within eighteen months and still be able to reimburse the M and O.
If we decided to.
But to Ms. Tossan's point, if, if we don't get that money, then there's going to be a, what, forty-million-dollar hit or twenty-nine-million-dollar hit on that new elementary school that's got to come out of salaries?
Right, because we're eighty-six percent.
So you're right, I mean, that's a, that's a huge risk.
Yeah. Mrs. James.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Tossan, thanks for clarifying that. So I, I guess I would like to just pick up on something that you said because I think an important cost to understand in this, in this scenario is understanding the cost of expanding the core of these buildings. And we may not have a choice, so that's a piece we have to figure out. But I think, I agree with you that if, if this is the route that we, it turns out that we need to go, then I'd like to understand the cost of the core, the core expansions or what's, what is needed if in fact the core expansion is needed, which I think, I think you said is pretty much for sure at Commonwealth and possibly at Austin Parkway and Settlers Way as well.
Yes, ma'am, I'm, I'm almost certain based on when these were built, that there's going to have to be some core expanded, but I just do not have all the information, whether it's just a kitchen cafeteria, whether it's an additional gym area, we're still working on getting that information, but I'm almost certain that there's going to be some expansion required.
Okay, thank you. So I, I guess I'd like to understand that more. So thank you, Mrs. Tossan, for bringing that up.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Leopold.
Fair, I just want to, I want to clarify one thing real quick. I think there's, there may be, on, on this slide, this should not be here. Just want to be very clear the difference.
That was the confusion, I believe. Yeah.
And so if we put the additions on, we don't have to rezone until we put this.
That was the confusion.
So we don't have to put an addition on with the Commonwealth. I'm sorry, we don't have to put, rezone with the addition on Commonwealth. It's not until we get the additions on Austin Parkway and Settlers Way.
If, if we're okay with being a hundred and seven percent.
Correct.
At Commonwealth. Right. Okay.
But if we do, if we do the new school and it opens here, we'd have to rezone?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So just, if you could go back to the addition slide, that's this, that's.
The one previous.
Sorry, I keep looking at the title.
One previous.
No, this is right, because this is the new elementary school slide.
Okay.
I mean, it says new elementary school, but it's not that, it's.
Thank you.
Okay, so my point, so I think what, what I, what I heard the group saying is that we should consider those additions a little bit sooner.
Yes.
So that, okay, I can't look at it when you do it. We should consider the additions sooner so that we don't have this, this twenty-one, twenty-two where we're talking about a hundred and nineteen percent, you know, that, that's, that's right there, right? So we should possibly consider those, at least one of the additions sooner, maybe staggering them, because right now you have them both coming online at the same time.
Sure.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Leopold.
Okay, so the next slide is the middle schools and the Clements and Elk and Skeeter patterns. Again, this is in, this is an either or. Recommendation three is build an addition at Fort Settlement for approximately three-hundred students or a twelve-pack to increase the capacity from thirteen ninety-nine to sixteen ninety-nine. This would be needed by twenty-one, twenty-two or build an addition or build an addition at First Colony, again, for three-hundred students or a twelve-pack that would raise the capacity from nineteen, eleven ninety-eight to fourteen ninety-eight and again, needed by twenty-one, twenty-two. And again, our, our capital costs here do not include any core expansion. And so here's our, our data for our addition at Fort Settlement. And so we'd be at a hundred and two, we're at a hundred and two percent this year, a hundred and ten in eighteen, nineteen, a hundred and fourteen in nineteen-twenty and then a hundred and twenty, or probably a hundred and nineteen-point-nine percent in twenty-twenty-one. And then when we get that addition that would come online, we'd be at a hundred and one and then we'd max out at a hundred and twelve over the ten years. At the same time, I, I just want to note that we'd be at seventy-nine, eighty percent at First Colony with its existing capacity and its existing zone. So that's, that's the first one, to build the addition at Fort Settlement. Here's the other side of it, which is to put the addition at First Colony and rezone. And so you can see we have our capacity going from eleven ninety-eight to fourteen ninety-eight and then looking at our utilization down here, again, this would require a rezoning process to balance the enrollment between Fort Settlement and First Colony. But overall, in either scenario, we'd be at ninety-four percent between the two schools. We would just be with the existing zones, we're a hundred and twenty-three percent at Fort Settlement and a hundred and sixty-seven percent of First Colony. Again, we never get to a hundred percent with the addition on either school. And so this is just that, that question of would you rather have a really large middle school next to a really moderate-sized middle school or would you like to have them in, you know, similar sizes and rezone?
Thank you, Mr. Leopold. Mr. George.
Yeah, the, thank you, thank you. My question is, the first one, of course, we talk about putting additions to Fort Settlement and of course putting addition either or. I believe one of the reason I, I think putting an addition to Fort Settlement make more sense because one of the issue during this process I came across with the community, especially the community is going to be affected by this, was no rezoning. Because if you really go back and look at the history, in the history, you know, Riverstone residents been rezoned so many times and above and beyond, they had to go through, you know, Hurricane Harvey and displacement and things of that nature. So then I, I understand where they're coming from. And so even adding addition to First Colony, as you mentioned, still there is another rezoning is required. And that's what, in my opinion, we could avoid by doing a, you know, addition at Fort Settlement. But my question to maybe Mr. Perez, did you get an opportunity to look into the Fort Settlement core? Is that we need to do additional work or what is the cost?
Yes, around these two, we do have the information and either one that we construct on, we will have to go ahead and expand the core.
Okay, so you're saying both Fort Settlement and First Colony, we need to, we need expansion?
That is correct.
Okay. And also another point I like to make is, you know, of course you are, how many years old the First Colony Middle School? It's much older structure.
I believe it's forty-three to forty-five years old.
Okay, and Fort Settlement is what, fifteen years, maybe eighteen years, something?
Built in two thousand and one.
Two thousand and one, okay. So to, as far as I'm concerned, I'm looking at, you know, why you wanted to add a addition, new addition to a much older school than putting it to a new school, it makes much more sense as far as longevity is concerned, when I look at it. So that's the reason why I believe adding a addition to Fort Settlement, since the numbers can satisfy our issue there, I strongly support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. George, Ms. Heliger.
I kind of just wanted to make sure I understood your last statement. Can you just repeat your last statement, please, around, around putting a, a addition to which school?
I was, I was saying I recommend or I support putting the first, Fort Settlement Middle School because it is a much newer structure.
So, and I wanted to make sure I understood, I think when you were speaking, you said, I think he asked a question around, A, an addition is needed for both schools regardless of what?
Either or.
Either or, okay, I thought you said, okay. All right, so then that, that changes my question then, if it's just either or, all right.
Mr. Burden.
Thank you, Madam President. So to get this straight, the core expansion is going to need, be needed regardless of which recommendation or it's only needed at the campus that receives the addition?
I believe it'll then be needed at the campus that would need the addition.
That is, that is correct. If we, if we put an addition, wherever that addition goes, it's going to need a core expansion. In this case, either school that we choose will need a core expansion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burden, Mr. Rice.
Mr. Leopold, for a point of clarification, I believe that Fort, First Colony Middle School opened in nineteen eighty-four, thereabouts, so it's about thirty-four years old, it's not over forty. Secondly, Mr. Perez, when we talk about a core expansion, are we talking about increasing the size of the lunchroom? What is, what does core expansion exactly mean to you?
Sir, we're, we're looking at not only the kitchen dining, but we're also looking at the locker rooms for the gymnasium, possible gymnasium addition and then also fine arts.
And fine arts?
Fine arts, yes, sir.
So kitchen, dining, locker rooms, so do kids suit out, do they suit out these days? I know I did, but I don't think kids do today.
I'm not certain, sir, I can't speak to that.
They do? Okay. And so fine arts, when you say fine arts, what does that mean?
In some cases, they needed, you know, additional classrooms. Right now, they're utilizing just various classrooms within the building, which would then become. which would then become regular classrooms, and we'd actually build a, a fine arts facility.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes, ma'am. So as in the last case, I would actually support the addition at Fort Settlement, but, but as in the last case, I would probably move, try to move that addition up, just so we don't ever even hit that 120%.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Ms. Helliger?
Just quickly, so yeah, and I, I agree, I support the Fort Settlement addition, but I guess what still concerns me a bit is regardless of what, with, with Fort Settlement, we still have this overutilization, over the 100% utilization. And so I think we need to have a conversation around whether or not is that how we want to, to your, to your point, do we want to continue to have a, a pretty moderate or under, somewhat moderate utilized school? With, because middle school is, is interesting. And to have a lot of kids, to say the least, to have a lot of kids, you know, still over the 100% zone to a particular school, I think has, has its own challenges. And I think we really need to have the conversation around, is that what we want to have moving forward for our schools, or do we want to balance it out? I know, you know, no one wants to get rezoned, but th- these are real numbers, and I'm, I'm talking, I'm thinking about the kids that are in the school and how they're interacting with each other. Because we hear it right now, for schools that are, are a little bit over 100%, you know, it's too packed in there, it's overcrowded, those kinds of things. So why, why would we not look at that here when we have an opportunity to also balance those numbers a bit?
Mrs. James?
Am I? All right, so thank you for your comments, Ms. Helliger. I, yes, it seem, it seems like balancing that would be a good idea. My concern again, though, is moving kids that have already been moved and moving kids too many times. And sometimes it works better to, to fill, to move programs or something like that in, in order to change the way the space is used. So I guess that would be my perspective on that. But I do think when we talked about this before, there was an opportunity maybe to fix a couple of feeder splits. And I don't know if that would happen. When we're doing these additions, there would be some attendance boundary changes. So I don't know if that would make the feeders, the feeder splits worse, or if they could be fixed based, and maybe the middle schools stay the same, but I think they, it ends up in the high school. I know, I'm not necessarily speaking clearly, but I'm.
I'm, I'm understanding it.
Okay, thank you. So is, is that, is that true that it could be fixed, or we don't? I would, we don't need to investigate that now, but I guess I'm in favor of fixing the feeder splits, because when we have 30% of an elementary class that goes one direction and 70% goes the other, that's, that's a pretty small percentage. And it seems like those are some of the numbers that you showed me last time. But maybe those splits are after the middle school time, so maybe there's a larger pool than that, that go with that cohort to the middle school, I'm not sure.
I think it's Austin Parkway that splits between Clements and Elkins.
Okay, well.
They all go to First Colony, but then they split at high school.
Okay, okay. So I, I'm just mentioning that. And then I guess my next question is for administration, are you recommending one of these choices over the other? Or how will the decision of which way, are we choosing that tonight, or, or what's happening?
Well, the, the recommendation is written, states, we would, that we propose approval is that it would be, and we would choose one of these after we do all the build-out and really analyze the cost to see which one's a better investment. And I think that would factor in all the conversation the board is having. But what we would like is the chance to do the study of the core, all of that work we need to do to see which one requires the most investment. And that also brings in to the table the Ms. Helliger's comment about balancing between the two through some boundaries if needed. But, so that's the recommendation, is to adopt it as it's written with the "or" in it. But like the previous one, we would come back to the board with more information for the board than to give the direction as to which paths to take when we have all the information.
Okay, so that wasn't my understanding of the recommendation. I thought we were choosing one or the other. I understand the, the need to maybe bring the cost analysis to the board, and I think that that's something that I might would ask for anyway as a board member. But so, so what we're saying is we're not going to make a decision tonight on this.
Well, certainly you're prerogative. If you want to choose as, as a board and say, we want to choose this one and vote on that one as the plan forward, then we're open to that. But we've proposed it as, that we're allowed to go back and do the work required to really do the right level of analysis in the right timeframe.
So I guess the bottom line for me, you know, getting back to Ms. Helliger's question, and, and, and Mr. James, Mrs. James's response to it, I see it as a utilization versus rezoning issue. So policy says 80 to 100%. So we dip a little below 80 in First Colony in 23, 24, 24, 25, 25, 26, and then we get back up into policy. So it's basically three years that we're dipping below, we get back up into policy. I, I guess if you tell me that it's going to cost, you know, $5 million more to add to First Colony over Fort Settlement, then I guess I would be surprised if it was that drastic, then, then it might change my mind, but I sort of feel like I'm favoring, you know, not rezoning these kids. I think we've talked as a board about that in the past, and to the extent possible, we don't want to rezone kids. And, and these kids have been, have, you know, to Mr. George's point, have been rezoned quite a bit. So if, if we could do, in my opinion, if the additions to Fort Settlement are feasible, and if the core is going to have to be expanded regardless of which school we go with, and my expectation is that that would be relatively close in, in cost, maybe I'm wrong about that, you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, then my opinion would be to do the additions to Fort Settlement, and let's keep the kids in their, in their zone school. And then, and I don't have a problem looking at the feeder pattern split, if we want to look at that, and let the community weigh in on that, and see, see what they want. But that, that's my two cents on it, is, it was my understanding that we were going to make a choice on these. And when we get to the action item part, we can, we can decide as a board, we can make the motion and decide what we want to do. But, but that's my two cents on it. Do we have any other questions or comments, Mr. Rosenthal?
Yeah, you basically nailed the decision. I mean, it's, it's, if you want to go that route, and the community's okay with being 10% over 100%, because they don't want rezoning, then, and I think that's, from what I see, that's, you know, kind of the, where the support is. So.
Ms. Helliger, she has something else?
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure that, and I, I do understand the, the not want to rezone kids that have already been rezoned. I, I'm sensitive to that. But I want to make sure, what I also hear from the community is not to have Band-Aids, create Band-Aid situations for our schools, and when, so we won't have to be back here in three or four years. And I don't know, I, I, I'm trying to learn as much history as I could with what was happening with the previous rezon. But I suspect whoever's on the board in 2023, 24, 24, 25, are going to have the same conversations that we are having today around the, if you want to say utilization of the, of that middle school. Yeah, I'm, I'm sensitive to it, but I want to make sure that we, we balance this, balance this very difficult decisions that we have to do to not out with the community's need, because the community's saying this, and this, and this, and that too. Okay? So I just want to make sure that we keep that in mind.
Thank you, Ms. Helliger. Mr. Rice?
Mr. Leopold, on your slide, if I'm reading it correctly, page nine, utilization for Fort Settlement with an addition at Fort Settlement. We, if we bring that online in 2021, 22, it bumps up to 120% that year, but then it goes down to 101%. And in 2027, which is nine years from now, we're at 112%. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Mr. George?
Yeah. I asked this question last time too, last week. And see, the Avalon and Riverstone is going to add almost close to 800 students. And then I understand more than 1,500 homes are going to be built, maybe even more in the Riverstone area. So again, this kind of confuses me. I'm trying to still understand, you told me last time, but you sure next 10 years, these addition, or one addition is going to take care of the the middle school population there?
It's the data that we have now. And, you know, if you look at the overall enrollment at Fort Settlement within the current boundary, it would go from 1427 up to almost 1,900. And so there, there's quite a bit of growth, and I can, I can tell you the majority of that growth is Avalon and Riverstone.
Okay. And, and, and also, I wanted to know that there are other sub, small subdivisions coming up within Riverstone that also need to be taken into consideration. So I, I believe your word, and you know, so, but I'm still confused about this number a little bit. Okay, thank you.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Leopold.
Okay, recommendation four, this is in the Kemper and Dulles feeder patterns. This includes rebuilding Meadows Elementary for 450 students on the existing site with a core size for 600. Rebuild Lakeview Elementary School for 450 students with a core size for 600 on the existing site. We do Meadows and would, would be open in the 2021 school year, and Lakeview in the 21, 22 school year for a combined cost of 58 million. If we look at the utilization figures and the enrollment figures for this area, we've got Meadows coming online at 450 in 21, 22. Lakeview coming online at 450, I'm sorry, 2021 at Meadows, and then 21, 22 at Lakeview. The way I have this slide built is that we have the, all the students in Lakeview that are in the Austin feeder pattern or west of six are included in these figures. And so this is, again, we'd have to have a rezoning process when we have Elementary 51 open. These students may or, may or may not stay in the school. Similar to our Austin, Travis, and Bush, I kind of ran this both ways. And so this is what the utilization looks like if we take all of the students that are zoned to Lakeview that are west of six out. And so if we leave them in, our overall utilization goes up to 87%. If we take them out, we're at, we're at 52% within the boundary with the capacity being 450. And then our overall utilization in the area goes down to 78%. And that's just between the schools that you kind of see on the board here. Again, we would need a rezoning process to make this happen in 1819. And again, that's going to be associated with Elementary 51.
Thank you, Mr. Leopold. Mr. Rosenthal?
Okay. You ready?
I'm ready.
So the reason I said that is because Scott, Beth, and Oscar and I went through this round and round, 6:30 in the morning on Friday, for about an hour and a half. Most of it was spent on this. This is the one I really struggle with, because it doesn't make sense to me. Especially the order of the recommendations. So I, I have something that I kind of sketched out, kind of an amendment to this. I'm not going to go, well, I guess I can go through some of the ideas. So what doesn't make sense to me is that we're willing to spend $30 million to close Barrington Elementary, Barrington Place Elementary, which is perfectly good neighborhood school. It's only 23 years old. To rebuild Lakeview Elementary, a school that requires currently gerrymandered zoning just to justify its existence. And when you look at it that way, Barrington Place Elementary is the neighborhood school, Lakeview is not. Why are we telling? In, in one of the, the write-ups in the recommendation, we're, we're basically saying that, you know, Barrington Place Elementary, your fate will be considered in the future after we spend $30 million rebuilding Lakeview. And to me, that's just the district picking winners and losers, and I have a philosophical problem with that. We can avoid that by holding off. If we still want to put the $30 million for Lakeview in the bond, that's fine. But let's do that last and see if we actually need the space. So, and the other, the other argument is, well, we could fix feeder patterns. Well, I don't think it's worth $30 million to fix a feeder pattern because Ms. James just alluded to a decision that was made years ago. It didn't cost anything to fix that feeder pattern, and the board chose not to do it. So I don't know why, you know, we're doing that now. And this feeder pattern, again, it is an elementary split. So a half decent portion, I think it's what, maybe 30%, are going off to Dulles Middle School, and the others go to in the Kemper Zone, correct? Okay, so those 30% of the kids, they have, you know, three years in middle school and four more years in high school to make new friends, build relationships, and plus they're all still going with 30% of their kids. Yes, it would be great if we could fix a feeder pattern, but I don't believe that, that we should be doing this by, by committing $30 million upfront. Again, so what I would propose is to rebuild Meadows Elementary, and we can have a discussion whether we want to do it at 450 or 600. And then renovate and add a 12-classroom addition to Sugar Mill. And, you know, again, we'd be using Barrington Place as that swing space, but it'd still stay open, and those zone kids would still stay there. And then after doing that, then you'd renovate, you'd realign the Lakeview, Lakeview feeder pattern so that they could fit into Sugar Mill. And then you'd renovate Town West. And then, if we still need that additional capacity for special programs, full day, pre-K, whatever, or if, you know, there is a possibility that, that those homes in there, I mean, it's a great area. There's a, a strong possibility that, that the same thing that happens in Bel Air and Meyerland and all that area where people are coming in and, 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 you know, tearing down homes and building new homes. There's a, you know, a good chance that that will happen. Whether that's going to happen in five years, I doubt it. Maybe 10 years. Yes, this, this is a more affordable spot in Sugar Land. But I don't think that right out of the box, you rebuild Lakeview Elementary. That, that just doesn't make sense. And then, if you would like, you can show some of the, some of the configurations that we kind of came up with, but that's, you know, if anybody else wants to see it.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Mrs. James?
Okay, well, Mr. Rosenthal, I disagree with your suggestion. I think Lakeview Elementary is a neighborhood school, just like every single one of those schools on that list. So to say that Lakeview is not a neighborhood school, I believe is incorrect. Certainly, the people on the Hill would tell you that some of their children and their grandchildren live in the neighborhood and go to school there. So I, I, I find it, and I think it would be offensive to the Lakeview families for you to, for you to say that. I would like to suggest that I have looked at these numbers. So let me say one thing, first of all. I agree with building, as I said last week, I agree with building Meadows to the 450. I agree with building, as I said last week, I agree with building Meadows to the 450 to 500 size capacity because I think that's appropriately sized for the Meadows Place community. So I like that part of the recommendation. I would also like to say that the Lakeview neighborhood has waited many, many years to have their school, to have the repairs done on their school. They've been very patient while other, other schools have had their repairs bumped ahead and moved ahead. And I find that it is unfortunate that we would say, well, now that we've gotten the school in such disrepair that we have to rent it, we have to tear it down and renovate it, we're just going to throw in the towel on that neighborhood. And I think that that is inappropriate for us to do that to the Lakeview neighborhood or to any other neighborhood in Fort Bend ISD. And thirdly, I'll say, I do not believe in looking at this that the, well, in, in looking, my understanding of the use of Barrington Place Elementary is the Barrington would serve the Barrington Place neighborhood that surrounds it. I am definitely in, a proponent of that. I believe in neighborhood schools. I think our neighborhoods are stronger and will regenerate themselves with a neighborhood school intact. And so I am not in any way in favor of repurposing Barrington Place Elementary. And in fact, I called that out last week as a, as a euphemism that I didn't feel was appropriate for that neighborhood without them having input. So I like the recommendation as it stands. I think it's appropriate. I like the timing of it because I believe that both of these schools need immediate attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. James, Mr. Burden.
I think that, thank you, Mrs. Tosin, that Mr. Rosenthal brings up some really good points and I would like to, I would like to go through some of these, Scott, if you can, on, on the discussion that you guys had this, this past Friday.
Again, these are some assumptions that are made on, on all the Lakeview students that are, that are west of six that would be rezoned into the Austin feeder pattern. We'd have about 800 students left between Lakeview and Sugar Mill. All the students could fit into Sugar Mill with a 12 classroom addition. Our current capacity is 606 plus 260 would be 836. Or all the students could fit into Sugar Mill without an addition if around 230 students are rezoned from Sugar Mill to Barrington Place. And so that would make that feeder split a little better, make it closer to a 50/50 split. And it would, it would, it'd fully utilize Barrington Place.
Mr. George.
I just wanted to bring a very different perspective. You know, I, I grew up in India and, you know, the government told me to go to this school or, or my parents said, you're going to go to this school. I went to that school and as long as I can, I went to some different schools. So I came here, last 25 years, I learned the concept of community school or neighborhood schools and all that stuff and I respect that greatly. And in this process, I had an amazing experience talking to so many people from Barrington Place Elementary, Meadows and, you know, Lakeview. And so I kind of agree with Ms. James said. I believe we should respect the, the community school or the, the neighborhood school and which include Barrington Place, Lakeview and Meadow Place. So I'm supportive of the way, without, you know, repurposing Barrington Place. I like to see it staying as a community school. And, and also, you know, end of the day, I learned one thing, you know, school is just a building and the, the community make that school what it is. And so I have seen so many emotions and so many, you know, connection to these buildings in, in a personal level. And I'm very blessed to, you know, talk to a lot of people and I, I like the way these recommendations being presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. George, Ms. Helliger.
So I, I also like the fact that both of you all have really, really good points and they're valid. I definitely believe that Barrington Place should not be repurposed. We've got, we've got to figure this out of how we create or utilize what we've already built as a foundation of our community. And so, you know, so I support both, Lakeview and Barrington Place. So I guess the recommendation, we will be voting on both of these, the recommendation we vote, or if we split them up or whatnot, right? So again, this goes back to, in order for us to do this, the bonds, goes back to the bonds, making sure that we have dollars to rebuild both Lakeview. And what, I think there's a timing issue is what you're bringing up around whether or not, you know, we should wait to do Lakeview versus doing it upfront from what the, what the district is recommending.
Right, because I think if you were to wait, you would see that there's only a couple hundred seats you would need at Lakeview. And I don't think you would build that school unless you rezoned it purposely just to make the school. So if you look at the numbers, it's got 54% utilization. So here we are recommending.
What page are you on, Mr. Rosenthal?
13. And this is once you've taken, Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, this is once you've taken all those kids that live miles and miles away, right, from Lakeview and they'll be in the Austin feeder pattern, correct?
It assumes that they would be rezoned to schools in the Austin feeder pattern in a rezoning process where we give community feedback.
So again, again, I understand the emotion, I understand the historical ties, I do. Okay, I'm just trying to remove all that from my decision-making process. And you're building a school that's going to have a utilization of 54%.
With its current zone, or with what would be, may be left of its current zone.
Right, but all of the zones altogether in here, the utilization is still basically under policy, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so think about that. The cost, you know, again, I know it's costly, but we got to think about money, folks, okay? We keep talking every, every two weeks that we're up here, we keep talking about tight funding and cutting things from budgets, okay? Every one of these schools costs about a million dollars to operate per year, okay? I just got those numbers, I guess it was Steve or whoever provided those to me for other district, other, other schools in the area. A million dollars, okay? You've got administration, you've got people running the cafeterias, people, so it's great, you can have neighborhood schools, okay? But just think about the money that you're putting into it, okay? You're spending $30 million to build a school that we know right now, unless there's some wild turnaround in the demographics, okay? Which could happen, okay? You're building a school that's going to be 54% utilized, plus spending a million dollars every year to run it. So you got to think about it. So we can't, we can't just, you know, we can't focus on how we cut costs, how we cut costs and then, you know, approve this because it's not consistent. So that's where I'm coming from. Again, I understand, I understand, I'm not trying to offend anybody, okay? I'm just looking at numbers. I'm looking at the data and I, and I recalling all of our conversations every week about budget crunches and struggles, okay? And so we got to have this discussion. So, you know, however the vote goes, great. My only point is, if we're going to do this, that's fine. Put the placeholder in there in, in the, in the bond, but make the decision at the end. That's all.
Did you have anything, Mr. Rice? Okay. I know. I need a point of clarification, please, on this recommendation. The recommendation is to rebuild Meadows Elementary School, rebuild Lakeview Elementary School and to not repurpose Barrington Place?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. James.
Can I, can I just, because that's actually not in the recommendation. Because the recommendation says, okay, after Meadows Place is completed, the district will consider whether projections call for continuing use of Barrington Place Elementary as a comprehensive elementary school or whether the school has capacity to host specialized programs such as full day pre-K or other innovative programs to serve that region of the district. So we need to clarify here, so we all know what we're talking about. So that's a really good question that you just asked because let's define that now, okay? What are we going to say?
To know what the recommendation is, please.
So I'd like to clarify that the recommendation is to rebuild Meadows for approximately 450 students with the core to support 600 and then the same action for rebuilding Lakeview Elementary for 450, with core to support 600. And then in the narrative that was updated and provided on Friday, it states Barrington Place would continue to serve as the swing space to provide whole school populations temporary spaces during renovations or replacement projects contingent upon the design process, procurement process, construction timelines and weather. Lakeview could occupy Barrington Place during the 2021 school year, Sugar Mill during the 2021-22 school year and Town West during the 22-23 school year. During this time, Barrington Place would continue to serve the students in the current attendance zone. After the renovations are complete at the above campuses, the administration will determine the future use of Barrington Place as part of the annual enrollment review process.
That's what I just read. And so that's, again, that doesn't say that, it doesn't answer Ms. Tosin's question.
So the actual recommendation is to rebuild Lakeview and to rebuild Meadows. And then to leave Barrington Place up in the air until after those schools are constructed?
To leave Barrington Place, serving the Barrington Place students and having the other elementaries visit. And then through the annual enrollment review process each year, we would review that enrollment and the enrollment projections to make that determination to bring to the board certainly for consideration at that time.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to hold my comments until after the other board members have spoken. Mr. Rice, I'm, I'm sorry, Mrs. James, and then Mr. Rice, if, if he would like to.
If you want to pick up on this, I'll just run back to Mr. Burden.
Okay, Mr. Rice.
Mr. Rosenthal, I understand your concern about the budget. I agree with you, we do need to watch the budget. I think we're going to have a presentation later tonight about 1:00 AM from Mr. Basset. But when I look at Barrington Place, if we, if we make these, if we rebuild Meadows and if we rebuild Lakeview, and I look at the year 2027, I see the enrollment of Barrington Place is 668 and that's higher than Sugar Mill and Town West. It's higher than any of them. So I don't know why we would consider, so I, I won't, I don't know why we would consider trying to repurpose Barrington when its student population is higher than other schools that we're not considering to repurpose. Also, when it does come to Lakeview, I know that has a, in 2027, if nothing changes, if there aren't any other programs to add to the student capacity, it drops precipitously. However, I will say that Lakeview is an old school. And when we talk about safe and secure schools, it is spread out with many entrances in and out of that campus. It's difficult to protect that campus. So for that reason, I think we've got to bite the bullet and replace Lakeview. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice, Mrs. James.
Thank you, Mr. Rice, I agree with your comments. And the last thing I'll say on this, Mr. Rosenthal, is that the year before you and I got on the school board, there was a conversation in this very boardroom about closing Colony Bend Elementary School because the population had decreased so significantly in the First Colony area that Colony Bend, Colony Meadows, all of these school populations were very low. So the community, none of the folks sitting here in the E-team were here, were the ones saying that, but someone did make that recommendation. And now we're looking at schools in the First Colony area and they have their populations, the houses have turned over and the populations have grown. I believe that the old Sugar Land area is poised to do the very same thing. With the Imperial Development ready to come online, those houses on the Hill are, many of them are being torn down, they're being rebuilt, young families are moving into the Sugar Mill area. And I think all of those neighborhoods are just poised to, to regenerate. And I actually believe that with the rebuilding and renovating of these schools, we will encourage the regeneration of those schools in Old Sugar Land. And that will bring increased revenue to our school district.
Thank you, Mrs. James. I'll come back to you, but I'm going to take my turn. So I think, I hear what everybody's saying and I think, I think it's both, Mr. Rosenthal. I think we have to look at the numbers and balance that with the emotions because we're dealing with people's kids and that's just a fact. Some of the things we got in trouble for after last week was because we forget that we ask a lot of these questions of the administration. We don't get together as a board and talk because we're not allowed to do that. So we engage one-on-one a lot of times with the administration. We ask a lot of these questions behind the scenes. We get a lot of these answers behind the scenes, as you guys can see. And sometimes we forget that we need to come out here and ask what's concerning us and what questions we've asked and why, how we've gotten here. And that was a mistake, it was a mistake on my part for not doing that last week. So I'm not going to do that this week because it concerns me a great deal to talk about closing schools or repurposing schools. It concerns me a great deal when, and when we don't value the communities and, and I'm not saying we're not valuing them, but I just think we have to be careful because we have made promises in the past, whether it's this board or this administration, it doesn't matter, this district has made promises in the past. And money has not been put into not just Lakeview, but a lot of these schools. And that's why we're where we are. So I feel like it's a balancing. We have to balance the numbers, but we have to balance that with the, with the emotions of the community and with what's best for kids. And when I left last night, I said, I just want to know what's best for kids because that's really what I want to do and I believe it's what this board wants to do. So my view is that we need to rebuild Meadows Elementary School. It's a community school, it's, it's a, it's the heart of that community and we've got to rebuild it. I believe that we need to rebuild Lakeview Elementary School. I don't know if it needs to be 450 students, numbers, maybe it needs to be less, but I'll tell you, this chart tells me if we include west of Texas six, then we get, we get more utilization. So I, I think there's a way to do it where we keep utilization up. And, you know, I agree that, that if we have a new school in that area, that it's going to, it will contribute to the revitalization and more kids may come in. But I just don't think it's the right thing to do to not rebuild Lakeview Elementary School. And finally, I, I don't think we should repurpose Barrington Place because I, as to Mr. Rice's point, that utilization is still high. And my, my, I personally think that, you know, we're district of the year because we're offering programs for students and offering choice. And I think we can be creative and use that space. I think, you know, Deanna and Joe are coming up with, you know, literacy programs. We've got our GT Advisory Council working hard for how we're going to serve our gifted students. You know, we're working on a RISE school model. You know, we're working on a RISE school model preschool program. I mentioned some of these last week. And I just think we can, I think we can use the space. I think we're not getting smaller as a district. We're getting bigger. Um, and so, I just think that we can be creative in how we use that space. But I really think it's important that we, you know, I agree with you, Mr. Rosenthal. We have to look at the numbers, and of course, we have to face the budget deficiencies that were, that are looming large over us these next few years. Um, but I don't feel that it's the right thing to do right now to not invest in these communities and make sure that the and their neighborhood school. Mr. Rosenthal.
So, I guess, in my proposal, all I was basically saying was that, one, we need to make sure we understand about Barrington Place utilization. And two is, we can do Lakeview Elementary, okay? But I just think it should come last, not the second thing out of the barrel. So, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. The last thing I'm gonna say is that, um, when we get to action on this, on this item, uh, we need to keep in mind what the recommendation is, which is to build Meadows Place, to build Lakeview Elementary, and to use Barrington Place as a swing school, and then potentially repurpose it. So, when it comes time for action, I wanna make sure that that recommendation, that we understand it so that the motion is presented in a way that the board wants to vote on it. Okay, Mr. Leopold.
Okay. Next area is elementaries in Elkins and High Tower north of, Elkins north of 6. This is recommendation five. Construct a new elementary school for approximately 150 students with a core size to 1,000 to relieve both Parks and Palmer Elementary Schools needed by 2020-21. Uh, total cost 40.6 million plus land acquisition. Uh, looking at our numbers here, you can see we've got the, turn my laser on here. We have the school coming online in, uh, 2021. I think that's the soonest that we could possibly get it open. Um, it adds, it would take our overall utilization between Parks and Palmer from 113% down to 74%. And then over the, you know, next nine years, it would come up to 104% within policy. Uh, we would, we would absolutely need to rezone between those schools to be able to balance enrollment between, uh, Parks, Palmer, and the new school.
Thank you, Mr. Leopold. Just these, Mr. Rosenthal.
Yeah, so, the overall utilization for the area would then be 104%, correct?
Correct. And that's just those three schools.
And the reason that those numbers show up in red is because you have not put any, you have, we haven't drawn any lines.
That's correct.
Okay. So, um, is there a reason that we couldn't just make that school a little bigger right out of the chute and kind of keep it under 100%?
I think that we, we do have additional capacity in the area at Goodman and Burton, which I think would come into the conversation in the rezoning process.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Mr. Rice.
Mr. Leopold, I'm adding on to Mr. Rosenthal's comment. I'm just really having a hard time following these slides on the utilization. And so, you're saying if we build elementary school at Parks to re, well, which one is it?
It would be, it would be.
Palmer, does it have a number?
Uh, I'm not sure that it has a number yet.
So, how can we be in 2027 at 194% at Palmer and 152% at Parks and, and have 104% average? Is that, was that what you're saying?
It, it's because we have not defined the zone for the new school yet.
Okay, well, when we define the zone for the new school, which you haven't done, but you must have given it some thought, where are we gonna end up?
We would, we would pull students from both Parks and Palmer in a debt downing process to balance the attendance area reutilization.
Okay, well, is there any idea of what we'll end up at? That's my question.
I mean, the goal would be to balance enrollment between the, the three schools and have them all at 104%.
Thank you. That's it. Thank.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Heligre.
Just a quick, is there a reason, and I don't, I'm trying to look back at some other stuff that we had, um, from last week. Is there a reason why we didn't include, like, um, Goodman? Because Goodman is close to Parks? Did I miss that question? But Goodman is close to Parks. And, uh, do, do we have the utilization for Goodman?
Oh, sorry. I don't have it in front of me. I'm just looking it up. Goodman and Burton would likely be involved in the rezoning process, and that's why they're, this chart, because I don't believe they're outside of policy.
They're outside of policy, meaning what? What does that mean?
Like, their, their utilization was between 80 and 120. And we were only, you know, what we're, you know, the idea here is that this new school would relieve both Parks and Palmer. And so, I just wanted to show the impact on those two schools with the new.
Yeah, but I guess, just, in order to balance it out, I would think you would have to utilize
Yeah.
the neighborhood schools around it. So, not, I mean, this is really myopic, meaning just focus on Parks and Palmer. But you've got Goodman, I don't know what, what's the, and Burton, yeah. Burton's, uh, utilization is what? Pretty low? You got Burton and, and Goodman. So, I, I think this is kinda, this particular view to me is skewed, um, with the need. Um, I, I know we have that area that's, that's growing and developing off of, um, Lake Olivia Parkway and anything. I know there's gonna be a lot of more growth and development there. But I think if the recommendation is that, um, I guess it doesn't matter because it says to relieve Park Elementary School and Palmer, that's not what we're really doing. I mean, we need to balance out all those schools in that particular area.
Yes, and that's what would occur in the rezoning process.
And rezoning is scheduled, I'm sorry, I have to step out. And rezoning is scheduled to go when, in, in 2019, next year?
Uh, 2019, 20. I mean, it could, it could occur in 18, 19. It's just the year before the school would, would open.
So, because the number up here still shows Parks and whatnot, it's such high, high utilization. That's why I think it would've been better for us to include, um, some of the neighborhood schools in there to really see what the balance is, how we can balance all those schools.
Sure.
Can I, can I just clarify, Eddie? So, are you, when you say that, are you looking at the, like, 194, 152?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, those are artificial numbers because we haven't zoned, we haven't drawn boundaries. So, each school theoretically would have 104%.
Yeah, I guess maybe just my little analytical.
No, I, I, I was confused. The very first slide you did, and then I got it, so.
Do we have the utilization at Goodman and Burton?
Uh, Ms. Tosin, I have that currently. Currently, we're at 65% at Burton. And we're at a little bit over 100% at Goodman.
So, Burton has capacity, Goodman doesn't.
At this point in time, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. George.
Yeah, I guess my question is, um, I had, we were talking about this last time also. There is a lot of new developments happening at Fort Ben Toll Road and, um, that area. Question is, is there any status? You know, like, is this the same way as in Riverstone? You have land, you know? Do you, have you, have we done any, any preliminary, you know, search for land? And do you have any location in mind, any status on it?
Yes, sir. As we presented, uh, last week, we're pursuing some land as we speak.
Okay. And I, um, as I said before, I, I always, I, I support, um, you know, putting addition to much older structure than building a new facility. So, I'm supportive of this recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. George. Yes, ma'am.
Can I clarify? In all instances where rezoning would be needed for that planning process year, we would involve all of the area schools that are within an area that may not be indicated as ones of high or low utilization. But we would involve a community group, a focus group from each one of the elementary schools, middle schools, or high schools associated with close proximity in order to balance enrollment past the, the two, in this case, the two that would reach overutilization. We would incorporate Burton and Goodman within that planning process.
Okay. So, I feel like that we, we, we looked at the land last week, and we looked at the, uh, 10 years plus out. And I feel like that we're gonna need the school. With us at 104% between Parks, Palmer, and the new elementary school going online, I do believe that there is space, capacity. There's room at Burton to help balance that out. And we need to keep that in mind when we're doing the rezoning process. Um, we, we may not have capacity at Goodman. Then I don't know if that's going up, and at what, I don't recall at what extent it's gonna go up over the next 10 years. But we at least have room at Burton that needs to be utilized.
Yes, ma'am. And Goodman declines over time. Um, they're projected to have an enrollment of 581 students in 2018.
What's that utilization?
I don't have the utilization.
Okay. The student count doesn't really help me if I don't know.
Well, I wanted to show that it goes down to 511 in the 10 years out. It was a steady decrease.
Okay. And what about Burton?
Burton's current enrollment is 399 with a projection of 388, and it moves upwards to 525 in the 2027 school year.
So, we're looking at it increasing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, yeah, so I think that that, I, I don't have a problem with the school, but I think that process needs to make sure that we keep, um, keep those schools at higher utilization because Burton right now is, is considerably below. Ms. Heligre.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a statement. I think one of the reasons why we're asking the questions, the type of questions that we're asking, even though these are the recommendations, because we wanna give people a sense of what's the true plan, right? Versus, you know, some, um, a staging plan, right? We want, we want them, at the end of the year, I mean, at the end of this or in the near short future, they have an understanding of what their kids, what schools their kids are going to go to. That's why I need to see, well, how does this impact Burton? How does this impact, um, Goodman Elementary School? Okay, I think that's for all the, all the recommendations. When we have rezoning, we need to see that kinda plan in place.
Thank you, Mr. Leopold.
Okay, the next area is the elementary schools in the Marshall feeder pattern. Recommendation six. Use available elementary capacity to implement innovative instructional programming. Expands choice, opportunities for students, and improves student outcomes. Uh, the timeline is to have an extensive planning process in 2018-19 and begin implementation as early as 1920. Uh, again, just some, just some high-level impacts here. Program development requires extensive planning management. We wanna, and pilot projects to support long-range implementation. Um, innovative instructional programming and, and flexible scheduling options could be developed. Uh, we're looking at full-day pre-K, two-way dual-language program, Early Literacy Center, Gifted and Talented Academy, STEM Academy, Performing Arts Academy, pairing innovative programs with zone student enrollment or a school within a school. And again, this, this desired outcome is, is intended to increase opportunities and improve outcomes that would help increase enrollment and better utilize utilization of available space by providing incentive for zone students not currently attending FBISD to re-enroll in FBISD. And increase enrollment, and increased enrollment would also have a direct impact on future revenues.
Mrs. James.
All right, so, the recommendation, so you can leave it on that slide. The recommendation is, um, basically use elementary capacity as it currently exists.
Correct.
Uh, and I agree with that. Um, and I guess my emphasis on this particular, um, recommendation underline something, I'd underline improved student outcomes. Um, and of all those things that are listed there by the bullet points, I would choose the things that would be most likely to improve student outcomes. And the two that jump in are probably the top three there on that list, but certainly full-day pre-K. And as we're piloting, um, the Early Literacy Center, perhaps this is a feeder pattern in which we can expand, um, the early literacy concept. Uh, but I'd just like to emphasize, improving student outcomes has to be the number one priority in these elementary schools.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Ms. Heligre.
Yeah, just quickly, I, I agree wholeheartedly around, um, your, your statements. I guess when I look at this recommendation, I, I fully support the full-day pre-K in this particular area. I don't see why we have to have this particular recommendation. Our goal as an organization to be, to be, um, improving, um, the student outcomes in all of our schools. So, I'm not sure why we have to have a recommendation and vote on this.
It's not. It's a utilization recommendation.
Okay, so, so we're not gonna be creating, vote on this?
Yes, we're gonna be voting on it. It's how we deal with the utilization in that area. And the recommendation is that we're going to implement innovative instructional programming in order to address the utilization. Space, this is, these are space recommendations.
Okay, I mean, I, I get that. I just think it's, um, we, we don't, you know, today, I don't have to, I don't have to make a recommendation necessarily.
Are you gonna close the school? Are you gonna rezone? Are you gonna use programming? That's kinda like, so they're saying use programming. Okay. All right. Mr. Rosenthal.
So, my only question is, um, what is the goals and the timeline for increasing utilization? Or is there one?
As we look at the options that are listed, um, the recommendation states there's extensive planning that needs to happen. Um, when you look at any of those programming pieces, at least a year of planning would be required. Um, there may be some pilot options. When we think about a two-way dual-language program, um, we would pilot, but we would build a two-way dual-language pro, uh, program cohorts. So, the utilization would build over time. Um, if you started with a kinder cohort, and then each year added additional kinder cohorts, then that would address utilization over time. Um, I don't believe that there would be immediate utilization that would bring us all the way up to 100% or the ranges that we're looking at. But it would be built utilization over time.
So, when you say building up a kinder cohort, you're talking about bringing kids back into this feeder pattern uh, with kids that don't go to Fort Ben ISD schools, go into charter schools, private schools, whatever.
It may attract, attract students who currently are not enrolled, either through a full-day pre-K option um, or, um, through a special programming option that would attract parents who are currently not enrolled in our schools.
Okay, well, along with the, um, obvious, um, success of the kids, I would like to see at least us put a goal attached to this recommendation of achieving, um, utilization within policy within a certain number of years or whatever. So, yeah, obviously, it's not gonna happen in a year or two. So, okay, thank you.
Well, I would like to piggyback on Mr. Rosenthal's comments. We, we do have to have a timeline. And, uh, I think a full-day pre-K is very good. But, Mr. Bassett, I'm gonna ask you if we've got that in the budget. So, if we're gonna have a full-day pre-K, what does that mean in full, to Fort Ben ISD? Three-year-olds, or are we starting with four-year-olds? And how many kids, how many kids would you envision at each of these schools? And do we, are we gonna hire teachers for the three and four-year-olds for a full day? Is that in the budget that you're gonna present later tonight?
No, that, that's not in the budget at this time.
Then, if, if you've got a timeline, as Mr. Rosenthal says, to implement this program within the next two years, then that, that is something you're gonna have to add next year when you show us a budget, correct? Otherwise, this is just rhetorical.
If we were gonna implement it in 1920, yes, we would. If I can, um, we definitely, you know, heard the commissioner speak the other day. There will be an emphasis on pre-K, whether or not that'll manifest itself in, in terms of any funding for full-day pre-K this session. It certainly needs to be determined. Um, I think there'll be more momentum for it either this time or the next time. The other thing that we have to think about and be mindful of, we have 4,000 of our kids in, in, or, not our kids, but kids eligible to be in our schools in charters. And as we, you know, develop some of these programs, you know, we're very hopeful that we'll be able to track back some of these 4,000 kids. And so, uh, you know, if that's the case, that'll certainly help in a lot of these areas.
Yeah. I know that studies have shown a full-day. I know that studies have shown a full-day pre-K is very effective. I think everybody in the state believes that, except for the Texas Legislature. So I would really, if we're going to recommend this, I'm with Mr. Rosenthal, let's, let's just not talk about it. We really need to have a plan going forward. And if we don't, then we wasted our time here talking about it tonight. Thank you.
So I agree with that. I think we need a, we need some goals in place. And I think we need to perhaps set some, some benchmark, at least updates, on you guys presenting to us what your recommendations are after you've studied it. If we can, you know, get back and you guys tell us what your recommendations are, and then what the timeline is for setting that out. I think, I think we need that. So I might understand that this recommendation means that we are not repurposing any schools, including Blue Ridge.
Blue Ridge is not in this feeder pattern.
Okay.
That is correct. We are not recommending repurposing a campus.
You're, but you're not recommending repurposing any campus in this, in this particular feeder pattern?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Next recommendation, please.
Okay. Next recommendation is elementary's in the Ridge Point feeder pattern. Recommendation seven, construct a new elementary school for approximately 850 students with a core size for 1,000, where we leave elementary schools and we set, set up plantation community. And then recommendation, the other part of this is to build a second one. We would build one by '22, '23, and the second one by '24, '25. You can see, we've got our utilization tables. We don't have any, any theoretical boundaries in this area. And so we show the enrollment for these schools is zero, but we have the capacity in the total. So that you can see our, our overall enrollment is currently 88%. It would be at 104% the year before the first school would come online, and then it would come down to 94%, and then it would be back up at 100%, and then back down to 92% with the second school coming online, and then 98%, 103%, and 108%. And so we do have a lot of growth in this area, and then these two schools would help alleviate that and keep us within policy for the next 10 years.
Questions from the trustees. Mr. Rosenthal.
Again, I would just recommend that we start off, instead of an 850 school, make it a little bigger. Just, if those are already at their projections, then, you know, let's try to keep it under 100% if we can. So I'd make each one of those schools a little bigger since we're already out there building, so.
Thank you, Ms. Rosenthal. Anyone else?
I would agree with that. I don't think we should build schools that we're going to have to spend money to add on to. I think it makes more sense to build the school at the capacity we need it. So if we're going to vote on this, I think it needs to be at the higher capacity. All right. Next.
Recommendation eight, this is elementary schools in the Willow Ridge feeder pattern. Again, this is very similar, if not identical, to the recommendation six. Use available capacity to implement innovative instructional programming that expands choice opportunities for students and improves student outcomes. Again, I don't, that's a learning process, I'm not sure why that's on there. It should be extensive research in 1819, and then implementation beginning in 1920. And again, a program development that will require extensive planning and project management, pilot projects. Again, staff begins to begin planning during the 1819 school year, and begin pilot projects in 1920. Innovative instructional programming. Again, collaborative process between parents and community members within the Willow Ridge feeder pattern. Strategies may include, but are not limited to, full-day pre-K, dual-language, early literacy, gifted and talented, STEM, performing arts academy, innovated, or pairing innovative programs with zone student enrollment, using a school within a school or other recognized model. And again, the desired outcome is increased opportunities, would improve student outcome.
Thank you. I think, going back to the other recommendations, the board feels, would, I believe feels the same, and we're going to need some goals around this, and perhaps a study period where it comes back to us with updates. And again, this means no repurposing of schools, including Blue Ridge.
Correct.
I'm in the right feeder pattern now. Okay. Next.
Okay. Moving on to high schools. This is our, our high school utilization map that shows our balance of utilization on the west side of the, of the district of high schools. And then we have our underutilization at Marshall, Willow Ridge, a little bit at Hightower, and then extreme overutilization at Ridge Point. This is kind of our, our current capacity, enrollment, and utilization at high schools. And so you can see our, our capacity is the same because we're not making any changes to capacity. You can see our enrollment. Our enrollment at Ridge Point goes from 2713 up to 4374 over the next 10 years, 5% up to 169%. While we have Elkins over 100%, but within policy, Hightower at 78%. And I want to, I want to reiterate that these numbers after 2018-19 do not include any academy enrollment, so these are live-in populations only. So Hightower would be at 78%. I, I just want to note that that's very similar to its current utilization at 80%, which does include the academy students. And so if the academy programs were to stay at Hightower, the utilization would be within policy. Marshall 53%, again Ridge Point 69%, and Willow Ridge 59%. And our overall high school utilization stays below 100% over the next 10 years. We're at 94% in 27-28. So recommendation nine, it would be Hightower, Marshall, Ridge Point, and Willow Ridge High Schools. For Ridge Point High School specifically, develop and pilot and implement innovative instructional program and flexible scheduling options to expand choice opportunities for students and improve student outcomes and address overutilization at Ridge Point. Our timeline is to develop proof of concept by October, October of 2018, pending results of a proof of concept, plan, or plan in 1819, and pilot in 1920 with full-scale implementation by '21, '22.
Isn't there another slide?
Okay.
Don't we have another slide?
Impacts here, this innovation is scalable based on enrollment. Flexible scheduling may increase operational costs for additional faculty, staff, and transportation, but those are costs that you're going to incur anyway if you have a new high school. But it's not going to have those, would be associated with having a new high school.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Helloger.
So I guess when you just did your summary there, you just stated new high school. You didn't state anything about rezoning. I, I guess I am still challenged with the fact that we, as a district, because, you know, I, I understand elementary is our babies. You know, those are our babies. Want to keep them close, keep them to the community, keep them, keep them walking and riding bicycles to the school. Middle school, they're starting to learn a little bit more about themselves, trying to figure it out, trying to figure out where they belong. High school, though, should have a little bit more options around preparing them for the real world. How do you prepare our kids for the real world? Expose them to the real world. So when I'm looking at this, I'm, I'm, the, this innovation, I'm all for innovation. Let me make sure I get that right, first of all. I just don't understand this particular flexible scheduling and why we would necessarily keep the utilization still so high at that school versus putting kids at different high schools, whether it be putting more into Hightower, putting some programs in the Willow Ridge and the Marshall feeder pattern. I, I don't, if you could tell me a little bit more about this flexible schedule, what it's like? So I think I heard someone say it could be like college. So if I go to college, I can go to school on Tuesdays and Thursdays from nine to ten, you know, nine to 12, then I don't go to class Monday, Wednesdays, and Friday. I just need to understand. I, I don't understand it.
All right. Go ahead.
Yeah. So one of the things, I think is that we've been studying a split schedule, and just to be very basic with that, the split schedule we've been reviewing is having sophomores, juniors, and seniors arrive at a specific set-in time, and of course, ending their day at a specific time. But the split schedule would have freshmen, students entering the school or beginning their school day at a different time. So that split schedule would obviously split between freshmen and sophomores, juniors, and seniors. The other thing that we've been reviewing has been the alternating block, which is very similar to what I had to go through back in the fall after Harvey. So what they did is they started their school day at 7:00, and they had a Monday, Wednesday, and Friday schedule where you had to attend for 61 minutes each class. On Tuesdays and Thursdays, you had an 83-minute class. So there was the rotating, similar to what you have in college. So Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, students would attend classes for 61 minutes, and on Tuesdays and Thursdays, they would attend class for 83 minutes.
Okay. Did we have something like this at Hightower High School? We changed this up a little bit.
I...
I thought we had that. We, we had A and B schedules, and then last year, or whenever it was, we had this big conversation right here in the boardroom, and then we said, no, that doesn't work for us because of minutes or something else. I can't remember that full conversation, but I do remember that.
Yes, they used to have an A-B block schedule, but that's not the kind of schedule we're referring to here. And to be frank, the, the difference is when you do a schedule like this, you have to prepare the teachers to teach for extended blocks, which is always part of the implementation plan. And so at the time, at Hightower, it's because we were not getting the full leverage, the power of the 90-minute blocks. So we're not talking about full 90-minute blocks because many districts are, some are doing it successfully, others are moving away from it for that, for that reason, because it's very expensive. But this is a different kind of schedule than what, than Hightower.
Well, this is a different type of blocks? This is a different type of block?
Well, some, to be, so Ms. Helloger, you're getting into a lot of detail that we're not talking about an A-B block or accelerated block. We're talking about something different that we have not done before. And we have not done the level of planning to set specifically what that would look like.
Fair enough, but I, I need to understand what we're getting ourselves into, because I remember in that conversation, there was some things around the kids having the ability to go to the medical center, to do their internships and those kinds of things. So whatever type of blocks we put together for Ridge Point, I would think it would be the same type of conversation, the same type of impact on Ridge Point High School kids that it were on, on Hightower High School kids.
I think the distinction here is that we're not talking only, it's hard to move from the standard, we're using this building to have kids in seats in school. What we're talking about is trying to do something that pushes beyond having kids come to certain hours. We're talking about digital learning things where, and that's why the idea of the college concept comes up, because students can now choose between online classes, coming to campus for, for classes. So we would want to provide that array of opportunity, not simply day, different days, but different learning styles to meet their needs as well. And so that, that's the kind of thing that creates the flexibility that you're describing, that then they can choose to go to the hospital, or do a lab on campus, or do digital learning from home for a couple of their classes, and come to campus for some periods as well.
I, I, I guess I need to see a little more detail. That, that's for me. I need to see, what does a draft look like? In order for me, it doesn't have to be, you know, concrete, this is what we're going to do, but give me, give me some options of what draft, you know, draft for that one, draft for the other one that you presented, so that I can see what it looks like before I can make a, you know, a decision on, these look like they're viable options for Ridge Point High School.
Well, and that's really how this recommendation is written. It's designed to say, give us time to put together that level of detail for the board before we make a firm commitment about how we're going to proceed.
So then if we, so then does that mean that you're going to come back to us and say, this is what we've come up with, and allow us to vote on it? What if I don't like it?
Well, that's the intent, is we, so go back to the recommendation. It says by October 18 of 2018, we would come back with a fully-developed proof of concept that would address the actual instructional programming piece to show, to demonstrate how viable. But equally important, it would show how much utilization relief it would actually provide to that school. Because if we realize it provides no utilization over time, then we'd want to move away from it. But if we can prove out that when we ramp it up to scale, and it's a viable instructional program, and we can do all of that by October, then we, the board would say, okay, we agree with this. Or they can say, no, this isn't buying the utilization that we want. It doesn't look viable. We want to go to another direction.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Helloger. Mrs. James.
Thank you, Mrs. Hassan. So I'll just start where Ms. Helloger was. So I appreciate, I like the idea that we have our, we have a proof of concept brought to us, and I would expect to have some goals and a plan, a vision for the, you know, sketch of a pilot, kind of what the impacts that we would expect. I think that's really the only way we can make a good decision as to whether or not, you know, that this, this particular plan, or the particular plan you'd come up with would be the right direction to go. And I agree, Dr. Dupree, understanding the impact to utilization is what's relevant to this conversation, but there are other conversations that are relevant as well. We talk about CTE programming, we talk about other types of instructional, innovative instructional programming. All of those play into it. So I recognize that, and I'm in favor of programming, but I'm concerned that the, the timeline for this and the viability of bringing up, bringing online a large-scale program, those things might conflict. It might not solve our presentation problem, is what I'm trying to get at. So I'm in favor of this recommendation, but I think similar to our elementary school in Riverstone recommendation, I think we need a second part to this, or an "or" statement. Because to me, then, the "or" is rebalancing of, of the schools on, on the east side of the district there. And as I said last week, I do not believe that Highway 6 is a hard and fast boundary. We move kids over Highway 6. In, in other locations, we move them over 15, over 99. So to me, at the high school level, State Highway 6 is not a, is not a high school boundary line. And I would like to add, I would like to suggest that this be an "or" addition to this, and it have a Part B that tells the community exactly what to expect if this proof of concept doesn't seem to be a solution going forward.
Mr. Burden.
Thank you, Mrs. James. I think you brought up a lot of great points. Do we have any idea how many students would be interested in online learning? Have we, I assume that's going to be part of the study, or do we have any preliminary data on that?
That would be part of the study. As I said, I mean, right now, a lot of the online learning is limited. We've got OLabs, and we do a lot of that for credit recovery, and we have some World Languages that we work through. But we, we would need to study about what, what kind of interest we could generate from students, what students would be, what, what kind of profile a student would have that would be suited for that type of, of, of learning option. And so those are the things that we would need to study through a proof of concept. It would be one piece of data that we would need to collect.
And so I'm clear on this as well. This would only be available to those who would choose to use it. It would never be something that anyone would be required to do if they didn't choose to do online learning, correct?
Exactly. You know, some of the, the data that we're going to be collecting in our focus groups with our, for, will also help us determine student interest. In many of those pieces, we, we look at a student voice. What do students want in terms of their programming options? And so as we work through those focus group conversations, we'll begin to collect some, some additional data on what interest we could generate from students, along with a solid profile for kids who would be ripe for that type of educational opportunity.
I know there is a certain population that is very interested in something like that, and I would like to see the impact of that on the rest of the planning, considering those that choose online. those that choose online as a part of their education, I would assume. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berdine, Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you. Um, so I think Ms. Heliger and Ms. James brought up excellent points here. Um, and I agree, because when I heard the date, October eighteenth or whatever it is, it's like, okay, well, what about if the conclusion is, that's not gonna work? Okay, the bond election is a couple weeks later. Uh, it's a little late to, you know, add something at that point. So I think as part of this recommendation, I think there needs some ors, as you said, whether that's going back and reexamining um a ninth-grade center, um, at least to, and I know that, that there was some opposition to that, I don't even remember what the steering committee recommended on that, whether that was a positive or not, I, I don't remember. But there needs to be some ors built in, so.
Mr. George.
I, I just wanted to thank you, um, Madam President, and, and I just wanted to say this, um, I'm always supportive of innovation and, but um, talking to a number of parents, um, those who live in Sienna and things like, places like that, I think, in my opinion, it is, um, we should try this in a school where there is no rezoning attached. I think we should, we should try Clements, or, you know, some schools where we should try it out, this um, um innovation, because I believe what we are talking is, there is a trust issue. And, and even we heard some parents were talking about last um, um, in Monday, um, the same way my fellow board members express their concern about clarity, and also they're saying, you know, don't pilot on my child. And, and I agree with that, and you know, and so I, I don't know what is the actual solution for this, and I honestly believe we could, we should um separate these two things, you know, in my opinion, don't attach it with the rezoning, you know, that's where the problem comes. Um, that's my understanding by talking to the parents. It's, it's simply a trust issue. They don't know what to expect, and we haven't given them enough um details about what to expect, rightfully, um, my fellow board members. So hopefully, we can come up with uh these innovations in campuses where we are not talking about rezoning. That's my point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. George, Mr. Rice.
Mr. Leopold, can you please go back to slide twenty-three? I, I need you to explain this slide to me one more time, please.
Uh, this slide is just the current, the current high school capacity, nothing changes. It's twelve, uh, twelve thousand three hundred twenty-nine all the way across. This is the projected enrollment for each school, and the utilization for each school. This is just to show you the numbers behind the map, the.
Okay, so this is as we stand today without taking any further action?
You are correct.
So if I'm looking at this chart correctly, then in two thousand twenty-seven, am I reading that correctly? With no action taken, the student enrollment at Rich Point will be four thousand three hundred seventy-four students?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, I would like to, uh, we have heard that the governor is proposing during the next legislative session, in order to bond, we will be required to have thirty percent participation, thirty percent voter participation within the political subdivision, and then pass a bond with a two-thirds supermajority. I think they're excluding all of the elected officials in the state on that requirement. But that means our only chance of doing that would be during a presidential election. So uh, the next one's gonna be in two thousand twenty-four, I believe. So if, I think that's something that we need to take into consideration now, and at the very least, we, uh, we should plan, if we're gonna plan for a bond now, we have got to include money for land, so we don't get in the same fix that we're in right now in Riverstone. And uh, we really need to take a, a really hard look at how all of this would play out if the flexible scheduling that we, the plan that we get in October isn't, isn't gonna fly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. So I, I agree with a lot of what has been said earlier. I, I said last week that this was my parking lot idea, because the problem that we're trying to solve is utilization. And if we could look at implementing innovative programming to solve our utilization problems, that was part of our goal during this process, was to look at innovative programming to try to solve some of our utilization problems. At that time, I was under the understanding that this flexible scheduling would do that. That was the, that was what I was told at that time. Um, since then, we are now looking at um studying this to even see if that's true, and how long of a fix this might even be. Um, we looked at some of the numbers, Mr. Leopold, and Ms. Martinez and I looked at some of the numbers, and um, it, it's not clear to me that, that that can happen, regardless of how we implement this scheduling, regardless of whether it's block schedule, or split scheduling, or even something more uh flexible or innovative, uh, it, it's not clear to me that, that that's gonna, that that's gonna do it. Um, and one of the things I talked about a lot with you guys was certainty, was making sure our community has some certainty around where their kids are gonna go to school and what's gonna happen. Um, I have two kids at Rich Point. I don't have a problem with them being part of flexible scheduling. I think it does expose them to the real world, 'cause those that are um preparing for college, it exposes them to that. But the last thing I want is to implement something that is not going to fix the problem we're addressing, and that's utilization. And if this is not going to fix that problem, and I mean for longer than three years, which that was the feed, that was the ninth-grade center, that's why it wasn't a recommendation, because it didn't fix it long-term, and it moved kids out of a high school, and then it didn't fix the problem, and then we're right back where we are. And if this doesn't do that, then I can't support it. It doesn't mean that I don't think we shouldn't pilot this, and we shouldn't give um maybe seniors the opportunity to um have flexible scheduling. When you ask the students, uh, the feedback we get is that they, they would like, they would like this opportunity. But, but I'm not, from where I sit today, I don't think voting, um, I mean, may, maybe the study is okay, but from the numbers that we looked at and what I saw, I don't see it as a, as even a really good short-term fix, uh, maybe, you know, maybe three years. And so I'm not comfortable with that. Um, the rights that we need to put money in this bond to purchase land for a high school. Uh, I realize we're at ninety-four percent utilization nine years out, which means we have some capacity, and I agree, we have to use that capacity, but I think we have to plan, we have to plan out, because we're gonna need, we're gonna need another school, and we have to make sure that we're planning for that. Um, so I, I like, I think we need an or in this as well, um, whether it's, it's or rezoning, if that's what we're looking at. Um, I, I think we need to, we need to have that conversation, probably not, um, we, we can talk about it when we get to action, uh, but I'm, I'm not sure I'm prepared to make a decision today, because I don't know that, um, that we have all the information that we need. Or we will need to amend it to make sure that we have the or in place. Um, so that's, I think that's where I am on it. I didn't get, uh, I didn't get a lot of answers to the questions, and I have more questions. So I don't feel comfortable moving forward.
Yeah, so, thank you for that. Um, and just one last thing, I know when we looked at the data from what the committee recommended, the committee recommended that we, they leaned closer to us rezoning that whole area, and splitting up kids between High and Rich Point. So why was that not a viable um option? Why wasn't that recommended?
Um, I think that, I mean, it was of the committee like, that it doesn't offer as much scalability as the, the innovative programming does. It is a intent, like, I can't, I can't understate how intensive the rezoning would be. It would be like no rezoning process we've ever done before. And it wouldn't be, and it wouldn't be, it would not be one rezoning process, it would probably be, have to, it would probably have to be done in about four different.
So, so I didn't wanna skip ahead, but, you know, to Ms. Heliger's point, so when we, we skipped to the next recommendation, and we're looking at innovative uh instructional programming to expand choice at Hightower, Marshall, and Willeridge, I have a high level of confidence that, I mean, how are we going to uh increase utilization, particularly at Marshall and Willeridge with innovative programming? I, I, I'm not sure, I have a high level of confidence that, that we're gonna be able to do that. I, I don't know if anybody has an answer to that, but.
Well, one specific programming option that we're looking at is our early college-high school option. Um, as I said last uh week, we've um been approved by T E A to look at um early college-high school, and eighteen nineteen would be a planning year for that.
Tell us what that is, define it, please.
Uh, early college-high school would afford our students to um be duly enrolled and earn high school credit along with college credit, and um they would have the opportunity to graduate from high school with an associate's degree. Um, we could offer that programming with open enrollment for students to come from various points of the district to the school. Um, we could look at a school within a school option, we could look at a whole school option, that is the purpose of the planning year, so that we can um increase enrollment there. Um, another recommendation that we made in the document is to look at um additional CTE programming, um, you know, for those, those areas. Um, specifically with dentistry and ophthalmology, um, was one of the recommendations that we were looking at as we um talked with Meredith, and, and some of the um community um options that we could, we could look at in that area. Um, we've also got auto um body and repair, uh, that would, that would be an option that we could consider in that area as um additional CTE programming with additional pathways. Um, so those are a lot of programming options that we're looking at. Um, specifically, as I said, the early college-high school is an option for us to consider um that provides improved student outcomes for our students, and also may draw students from other areas in the, in the school district.
Okay, Mr. Rosenthal. Mr. Rosenthal.
Um, so I'm, I'm actually going back, looking at the um, at foundations of the um committee, and the two top, I don't wanna say vote-getters, but um, were the ninth-grade center along with um rezoning. And I know we looked at that a little bit on Friday morning, and you can certainly do some, uh, and it would help, and I think when we looked at this, uh, we kinda talked about the ninth-grade thing, um, 'cause we do actually have some land nearby. Um, and um, between those two things, I think, and then on top of that, and then you can start with the, you know, innovative programming and whatnot. Um, but like I said, like I think what we all said, we have to have something concrete now, because now's when we're planning for the bond, so um, we, we have some difficult decisions here.
Any other questions? Okay, well, we sorta just jumped into recommendation ten, uh, which is to use the innovative instructional programming at Hightower, Marshall, and Willeridge. We heard Saiyadra give us some ideas on that. Let's uh, let's go to eleven.
Okay, eleven is to construct a new middle school for approximately.
Hang on, did you have questions?
I do, I just wanna make sure. So for, for recommendation ten, um, one of the statements on page twenty-seven, parent existing or new academies, or, and innovative programs and zone student enrollment, consolidate existing STEM-based academy, so we're not talking about taking out, or taking out academies from Hightower and putting them somewhere else, right? We're not, we're not talking about doing that.
Well, that, actually, policy already prescribes that we would, that, that academies are portable based on where we have available s- space. That's in policy. And so that's, that's in policy, F C local.
So, so i- is it, so this is where I need clarity, because if one of the successes of Hightower is to have those academies there, I think one of the success to have at Marshall or Willeridge is to have some type of academy there as well, or some type of innovative program there. So if this is, this is opening, opening up to allow us to remove academies from Hightower High School, I would not be a favor of that. So I just wanna make sure.
So, so I'm gonna ask everybody in the room to please just let us get through it, if, and applause and all that kinda stuff takes time, so let's, let's get through it.
So two things I would, I would speak to, to clarify. So I absolutely agree, and we agree, that these programs are, why we've recommended them for all the schools in that feeder pattern, as viable ways to better utilize the space, draw students back into the district. But onto your specific clarification about opening the door to moving academies out of Hightower, that is already in policy, this is not changing that. We, we already, if we need the space, so for example, if we were to rezone Ridge Point, part of Ridge Point into Hightower, we would do that without considering enrolled academy. We would do it based on seats of between those two schools, and then we would place the academy where we have available seats. That's the order that policy prescribes.
I'm gonna ask y'all, now, please don't speak out, please let the board, let the board do the work.
That was just an example.
Okay, um, and so to this particular recommendation, then, when will we figure out, what's the timeline then of those programs, so I can understand what the academies, what the programs are gonna be, all the things that you just talked about, what's the timeline and putting that in place?
Well, we would need at least a year of planning to be able to determine what our actions would be. Some of the things that we would consider is, how would we, what are the choice options? Um, making sure that we're addressing utilization, and as Dr. Dupree opened the meeting tonight, he did mention that we needed to look at several things independently, make sure that there are equitable opportunities, so at least a year of planning would be required. We've got a year of planning already set up for our early college-high school, um, you know, preparations, and so we would do the same in looking at some of the options that are listed here in the, in the recommendations. Um, we're currently doing research on what a school within a school option would mean, so that we can also think about how we might um address the class rank and top ten percent uh piece. So there's a number of, of pieces that would go into the planning before we would take on, on, on that.
Okay, so just to make sure I understand it correctly, then, um, we will make no changes per this recommendation. We will take this next year to create the viable um programs and for all the, all three schools, um, look at the rezoning. for all, all three schools, look at the rezon, possibly depending on how the, the recommendation, seven or eight goes, right, yeah, for flexible scheduling for Ridge Point will go, and then we will come back here, almost in a year's time, to discuss those programs, right?
Well, to make any long-range programming decisions, I think it would be prudent for us as administration to really go through an adequate planning cycle, so that we could look at what would all of the impacts be, and, you know, our, our ultimate goal is to ensure that we have choice and equity for our students. And so, in order to do that, and to look at how we might mitigate current challenges that we have with academies in, in trying to solve the 10%, the class rank, all of that would require planning. We would put together a design team, just as we've done with other programming, we would look at what are the impacts, we would look at utilization, we would look at solving some of the challenges that we have with innovation in mind. Ultimately, when we think about scheduling or any program, what we want is for learning to be the constant and time to be the variable, and so, whether it's a flexible scheduling option, if it's moving programming so that we can increase enrollment, all of those pieces are going to require a design team to come together and for us to do adequate. And in addition to that, we would need to do a budget analysis, and, and all of those pieces are part of what we would need to do.
Okay, so it just goes back to, all this is, I feel like we're just not ready for these recommendations, especially we've got the budget coming up. I feel like we, we're, we're selling ourselves a little short when it comes to planning for 2018, 2019, 20, 2021, when it comes to the budget and preparing for that. Okay, thank you.
Mr. George.
Yeah, this is an issue very close to my heart, and Dr. Dupree, you mentioned, you know, these programs are portable, and these are programs, and I am well aware of that, but they are children too, and, you know, I just want, I, we had this conversation before too, and we always talk about, I watched how academies performing over the years, and I, I had, all my children went to some kind of academies, you know, two of my children graduated from High Tower High School, and I respect, you know, this is nothing at all about one school or the other, and I respect everybody's feelings. And also, I just wanted to ask, last time when we spoke, our understanding was a standalone academy, which is a proven way to, you know, incorporate needs, but then, of course, High Tower High School, we decided not to do that, I respect that. But, another question I have is maybe somebody could answer this, we did have a couple of academy programs at Marshall in the past. Anyone tell me, I, I don't know, is that robotics or some, some academy programs?
Please don't speak out, let, let the administration answer the question.
There were some programs who were there, and I don't know which one were, and if anyone know?
As a part of the 1314 facilities planning and then, that happened in 2015, at that point, that's how, about how far back I can take you, the I B Academy was at Bush, and it was moved from Bush to Travis, according to Policy F C Local, where the freshmen were integrated into, to Travis as a cohort, similar to the G S A or the Global Studies Academy, which relocated from Clements to Travis at the same time.
I guess what I'm asking is, there was an academy program at Marshall in the past?
Yes, it's my understanding, prior to my coming to the district, there was an International Backstories Academy at one point, and I know back when I was here prior as CFO, there was also an engineering, and like, academy as well, that I think is, was the one, I think, program that was moved to, to Elkins, but I'm not positive it was the same.
Again, I'm not sure either, but I believe it is something to do with robotics or something like that, and that those programs did not make it, unfortunately, it didn't make it. And I B program, I have no idea why we failed that, and I have no idea. So, unless and until we, we work to improve, you know, the school when it comes to rigor and when it comes to all that stuff, I don't know putting a couple of academies there is going to solve this issue at all. And, and I'm, I have, because I, I close to very, I, I watched these things very closely, and even when it comes to High Tower Academy, and I, two of my children graduated from there, and I tell you this, that academy is not what it used to be, I know that. And, and last year, I pulled my daughter out of that academy because, you know, I didn't see any point in, in my personal case, I did that. So, point I guess I'm trying to make is, we have to, we have to find a way to address this issue, and academy children are making, in my opinion, an extra effort, and they are suck, don't have transportation to go to their houses, and they have to go to a school, and, and they were, they're supposed to do that because it's a program, that when they do that, I believe we have to respect them also as our children, and we cannot just, you know, on a regular basis move them around, and I'm, I'm not supportive of that in my, you know, I'm not supportive of that, and I hope we could find a way to innovatively, when we were talking about, to accommodate this, and find maybe some space where we could have a standalone academy program, where these kind of discussion in the future never come. Thank you.
Mr. Rice.
I would like to echo Mr. George's comments, and we create academy programs, and the kids get used to going to one school or another, and then those programs have flourished, and then if we move them to other campuses, it won't be as successful, so I think we need to find a long-term solution to that. I know parents, some parents of the, the kids who are not in the academy claim that the academy kids, because of their increased GPA, prevent them to some of our U T, A and M, Texas Tech and so forth, but we, we've got to find a way to accommodate them without moving them around all the time, and let the, let the academies continue to flourish, and going to a certain place, and then we uproot that and move it around, and it's, it's really hard, so I think we have an obligation to teach all of our kids, you know, the special needs kids, the average kids like me, the G T kids and the academy kids. Thank you.
Rice. So, when it comes to the academies, I would echo that as well. So last week, I was, I was in favor of the concept of consolidating, because it creates consistency and it creates certainty for the students, without us having to, based on utilization and enrollment, and potentially moving kids around. It's, you know, I, I may, I think I made a comment to some of you, you know, that's, that's just like rezoning, I mean, drawing boundaries is rezoning, cap and overflow is rezoning, moving ninth graders out to a ninth grader's zone, and moving academies, because it's just moving, it's moving kids. So, the reason I made the comments last week is because I favor, I favor a standalone, because I favor the consistency for them. I, I favor allowing kids within their zone schools the opportunity to be in the top 10% and take advantage of what the state has put in place, as long as the top 10% rule is there, we're going to have kids competing for that, and the purpose of it was to allow kids at, at schools, some of our more struggling schools, for kids to have that opportunity. And I don't want to take that opportunity away from the zoned children at any school. I think that we need to, that's an equity issue. If we can solve that problem, because I, and I'll just say that, that's, that's, that's really a deal breaker for me, if we solve that problem, then I'm, I'm open to, to the recommendation of, of not consolidating. If we don't solve that problem, then I feel like we need to look at, you know, it's have to be next year, but we need to look at future planning for that. And I, you know, I was, I was throwing out to you guys, I, I don't favor closing a school to do it, but do we need to look at space for that? I mean, we're building a C T E center, I don't know, do we look, need to look at, at space for that? And building out those academy programs and offering more, more seats and expanding them, which would also probably help our high school utilization. So I just wanted to go back and make those comments, because that's, that's really, that's really what I favored, was that concept. I, I don't, I don't want to rezone kids to do it, but that's the concept that I favor. And it creates that certainty and that stability for students, and I think that that's important. So, I feel like, with this recommendation in particular, I feel like I'm not there yet, so maybe we need more, maybe I need more. Mrs. James, go ahead.
Well, I didn't want to cut you off, because I was tracking with what you were saying, but I think this is similar to some of the other things we've talked about tonight, and maybe what we need is a plan for the academy program, so that it's, we've got, you know, what the goals are, what the plan is, what the vision is, and, and some stability around it, so that the community, and particularly the kids involved in academies or considering academies, will know what to expect. It seems like, the same way we're going to do that for the early college, should be a similar type of choice, or any of these other things. So, I, I don't, there may be some benefit to combining the academies all in one location, but I do not think we should do that at the expense of an existing school. And I, perhaps there's another location or piece of property we have, or another place that we could use to, to, to do this, do some combining or consolidation, or, you know, I don't, I don't, I think there's a lot of innovative ways we could do it, I'm not going to conjecture what they are, but I think it goes back to having a plan and having some clarity around it, and it, we need to understand what the purpose and the goals of the academies are, what are we trying to accomplish? And there are many things that the academies accomplish, and I agree, but let's, let's, let's write those out and let's identify them, and then let's work towards them, and, you know, as Mr. Rice said, strengthening, strengthening the programs, if we, if we have written down what we're trying to do, we can, we can accomplish it. And so, that would be my suggestion on this. Thank you.
Mr. George.
I have a real quick question. Mr. Perez, we were talking about, you know, I asked you a question before about, we have a property in Sugar Land we bought from Wharton Community College, that is correct?
That is correct.
And it's still there, we, we own it?
Yes, sir.
And so, what is the size, and is that a size of the school, or what is, what is that building like?
The, it's approximately 6,000 square feet. The, the one thing that we're working through on that particular one is that, when Wharton County was going to that school, they don't fall under the same jurisdictions that ISDs fall under, so we, we literally are working on getting a CFO for children.
Sure.
So that's one of the things that would have to, to occur before we could bring children into the building, and there'd be some upgrades, it does not have a fire sprinkler system at this time, that would need to, that's a requirement that would have to go in, into this, and, so there's a few things, but yes, it's approximately 76,000.
If we possibly repurpose that, how many students can, we can accommodate at that location? Approximately, approximately?
It's, well, depending on what we're doing, it does not have a dining area right now, it does not have a kitchen, so it's, it's hard to just come out and throw a number at you without really knowing what the programs are going to be and how we would be utilizing the building.
Okay, and, and also I'd like to see if there is any possibility we can expand that building, into, like you said, the dining area, and, now, all I'm, I guess what I'm trying to say is possibly maybe look into that as an option, I don't, and I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, because I, I still support a standalone program for this academy program, because that's the only way, like Mr. Rice mentioned, it is going to flourish, in my opinion, and so that's why I'm asking that question. I, I will, I will ask more question, and, you know, so learn more about it, just understand it, right? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. George. Do we have additional questions or comments? All right, let's move on, I think recommendation 11.
Okay, this is middle schools in the High Tower Ridge Point feeder pattern. Recommendation 11 is to construct a new middle school for approximately 1,400 students, with a core size of 1,600 to serve High Tower and/or Ridge Point High School. A planning process in 1819, planned opening during the 2021, or 2122 school year. I do want to point out that this is, this is one recommendation that was not really talked about much in the committee, because the need for it was beyond, you know, was the 2024, 25 school year, and so this is kind of one of those new developments based on the, the impetus kind of put on by the state with that two-thirds majority that Mr. Rice talked about. This table shows us the projected utilization with all these facilities online, I wanted to put Lake Olympia in here, I'm not sure why Quail Valley's up here, it shouldn't, it should be Lake Olympia, but this, this shows us what the utilization would be with the school online, so it'd be at 79%, 82%, 87% and 92% between Baines, Lake Olympia, and Thornton Middle School, as well as the new middle school. And so that's it.
So I like this plan. I think it helps a lot, it gives High Tower their, their middle school, and I think that as we looked at, Scott, on Friday morning, I think it would much reduce the utilization at Thornton, and it could be that you just need an addition, and we have no more middle school issues in that area, if you build this in the right spot. None of us were around when Lake O was built, built there, I'm not sure anybody's ever really explained why they built it there, because I'm not sure you can explain it. But, one of the, the nice things about this is that this is a place where if you built this middle school, somewhere along Highway 6 area there, purpose Lake O to be maybe that academy school, or an extension of the C T E center or something. So I think it would help balance enrollment, it would kind of put it in the right area, and we would certainly have use for the current asset. So I like this idea, whether or not there's land available, that's the big question.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Other questions or comments on this recommendation? I, I like that we have a middle school, because it's going to be needed, and I think it's important that we get that in, in this bond, so I will just say that at the outset. All right, so I know that we have just the summary slides left that summarize the recommendations. Do the board members have any other questions or comments at this time? Ms. Heliger.
So I just wanted to clarify, so, when we get to recommendations, I think it's nine, 10, seven, nine and 10, I think we still have options and whatnot, right?
Yeah, and we, we can, we still have action on those, so those motions can, can be constructed however we determine, and if we determine to table something, we can table it.
Thank you.
Okay, we've been going three hours and 11 minutes. Okay, we've been going three hours and 11 minutes. So I'm going to do this with the permission of the audience. We're going, I'm gonna, we have the School Health Advisory Council members who are here and who are prepared to make a very brief presentation. So I'm going to move that to now. And then we're going to break for closed session. And I'm going to tell you guys that, well, we have like an hour and a half of audience items, okay? So we have to break. And you, there will be plenty of time for the audience to go eat and get back. Eating, and you need to eat, we'll, we'll have enough time for you to leave and then get back. And then we'll take up audience items, and then we'll take up action. But we can't, we can't keep going without, without a break. And we'll make it as, as quick as possible. So next up is the School Health Advisory Council update. And thank you, guys, for being here, and thank you for being patient.
Good evening. Let's move this down a little bit. Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. My name's Namita Bajwa. I'm the current chair for the School Health Advisory Council, or SHAC as we call it. And we're very excited to give you a brief overview of our annual report tonight. If you're wondering what School Health Advisory Council is, it's required by law from the Texas Education Code. The School Health Advisory Council should have a majority of members that are parents who are not employed by the school district.
Excuse me just a moment. Can we ask the audience to be respectful of the speaker? Please. Thank you.
The SHAC also is a group of individuals, not including parents, but also community and school district leaders that provide advice to the district on coordinated school health programming and its impact on school health and learning. Our vision for, in Fort Ben ISD is a little bit more broad. Instead of just students, we want to provide healthy school environments for students, staff, and community members, and to teach and promote wellness through healthy lifestyles. One of the things that we do each year is create goals. There are six goals. I'm not going to go through each one of them. You should have gotten the final report from us. But I do want to highlight the SHAC's work this year because I think we've done a lot of things, not only with wellness policy, but also with providing health awareness and programs in our district, which I think would be important for you guys. A lot of times, things, great things are happening on the campus that we don't really get to talk about at the district level. And I hope this is an opportunity to just show you a few of the things that we can do. So first thing I do want to talk about, we do spend quite a bit of time from 2016 till now, working on the policy. The wellness adopted by the board, and we thank you for that this year in June. And since that time, we've been working on creating a wellness plan that includes regulations so that the camp, at the campus level, that they have an understanding of what's required of them. I just want to point the picture out. This is a stakeholder meeting that we had. I want to thank for helping us put that together with 60-plus people from all over the district at every different level, parents, principals, teachers, nurses, and all coming together to talk about the policy and what was important to them on the policy. Our goal is, and we've all, I think we've already have some completion on this, of creating a wellness plan, which is like a three-year outlook on trying to get everybody to the same place as far as wellness goes. The other thing the SHAC does is that we support and celebrate student and community health awareness programs. I want to point to the pictures here as one of the programs that we've done this year. This program is the Fort Ben ISF Foodie Tour. We were able to visit seven elementary schools in our district. And the purpose of the Foodie Tour was to introduce children to fruits and vegetables, of which they have maybe not tasted before. There were food demonstrations, food tastings, and also healthy recipes that we were able to give out to them, so they can make things at home. This was from a grant by the Allard Foundation. Sandy, who you recognized earlier this evening, is a member of our SHAC. The other thing that we do is, based on parent and campus feedback, we create district-level initiatives. I want to point to the picture at the bottom of the slide, the Turn It Gold. This came from a parent who is now a member of our SHAC. She has a homebound student who is fighting cancer at this time. And her, her initiative was to try and have an awareness for those children who are not able to attend school, and also to provide the campus a way to support that student. And so this year was our first year to do Turn It Gold, and we're going to continue that. The other thing that we worked on was from another parent feedback on food wastage. And I'm pleased to say that Child Nutrition took up that initiative. They're going to work with different programs on piloting next fall, on looking at share tables, which is a way to reuse some of that food in the community. So we're real excited about that. The last thing is, if, when the district requests us, we will, and we love to provide recommendations that are evidence-based, but also looking at stakeholder input at every level. I do want to point out that the SHAC has specialized subcommittees that are surround, that are, that align with coordinated school health. So it's Health and PE, nutrition, social-emotional wellness, which also includes services, and family and community. And each of these subspecialty, subcommittees are headed by not only a parent, but also a district committee chair. The nutrition depart, the nutrition subcommittee was involved in the Child Nutrition Director interviews and really enjoyed that opportunity. We also were able to look at the start times for high school students and looking at the pros and cons within each of these subcommittee levels. One of the things that we were able to do is to put together the stakeholder summary, not only with the challenges, but also with suggestions that we came up with from what stakeholders had given us. So that's been summarized and given back to the district. Also, we created a research database. So you could look at the research at some rounds, later sleep times, and the effect it has on teen, teen development. Specifically with lack of sleep, we're looking at things like stress, focus, because their brains are not really kicking in until later in the day. So the SHAC, at our last meeting, voted to tell you that we believe that later start times are necessary for addressing the social, emotional, academic, and health needs of our high school students. We realize there are challenges there, but we hope that you'll take another look and maybe looking at how we can incorporate that into our high school experience. And I just want to say thank you to the board for allowing us to talk to you and give you an overview of some of the items that we had today. I want to thank my executive committee. Erica is our vice chair. She cannot be here tonight. She's a parent, also PTO president. And Kathy Hunter, if you would stand, she's our secretary and also parent and works in PTO. And if the rest of the SHAC would stand up. We have Jagi Shadoshi here, Pearl Lam, Tiny, she's our collaborative communities liaison. And we have Kristy Durham, who worked really hard with us on the wellness policy, as well as Lori, who's with Health and PE. And Stephanie Kellum, who's over there, and she's our youth wellness coordinator. And without these guys, obviously, none of those activities would have happened. So I hope that you give them the recognition they deserve for all the work that they've done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bajwa. And thank you to all of you for being here this evening and for all of your work on the committee. It really is needed, and we appreciate the recommendations, and we appreciate all the work that you do in all of our schools. Mrs. James.
Thank you, Mrs. Tosan. I just want to, I'm, I'm the trustee representative to the SHAC this year, and I just want to thank Namita Bajwa, who's been the chair for the last couple of years. She claims she's stepping down, but she has served the SHAC many, many years over a long period of time, including developing the WATCH program that is, that challenges all of our schools to incorporate healthy practices into the school year. So I think we all deserve to, and of course, all the parent volunteers that give their, of their time to volunteer on the SHAC. They put a lot of hours in, and they have great discussions about health and wellness. And it's, it's been, it's, I think they serve an excellent purpose, so I'm glad that they could be here tonight and appreciate their efforts.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Thank you again for being here. Appreciate it. Okay, so at this time, I'm going to ask the board members if we can take a 15-minute break. So it'll be a short break. And that way, we'll come back out and hear audience. And then we will go back in.
0697. Sorry.
And then we will go back in and do closed session after we hear audience items. Okay. We will now convene in closed session.